Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Sandy.
Councilmember Stacey Green.
The President.
Councilmember Kinney.
Here.
Councilmember Blockall.
Here.
Councilmember Cesar Navarro.
Here.
Mayor Tim Hobbie.
And I am here. Last time I checked.
Mr. Mayor, before we start, I will remind everybody to speak into, directly into, the microphone. I'm getting, a lot of people are having a hard time at home hearing us.
Sue, maybe you can have somebody text you if they can hear us.
Nobody has ever said that to me. Ever.
Ever.
I hang with older people.
Mr. Mayor, do we have our new system yet? Is that coming soon?
They start tomorrow morning.
There we go.
They'll be able to hear us very well then.
On the ceremonial agenda tonight, we have the Human Health, no, Siskiyou County Health and Human Service Agency, ready to make a presentation. Welcome.
Councilmembers. I'm Debbie Walsh. I'm Deputy Director of Social Services. We oversee the Adult and Children's Service area. I brought with me Susan Savelli, who is our Program Manager, and Judy Carter, who is the Supervisor over Adult Services. So, there's been some interest about what we actually can do and what we can't do for adults who are in our community, so we thought we'd come and share, make a little presentation, get some names and faces, so you have somebody to contact if one of your constituents is having an issue or you're concerned, rather than just calling to that 800 number and getting, okay, who are these people? At least you know who we are. So, I will have Judy and Susan take it over. Questions, we'll take questions at the end, and hopefully, we'll be able to answer them all.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for having us. So, I will be providing some information on adult protective services. As Debbie said, I am the Supervisor for Adult Services, which includes adult protective services and in-home supportive services. So, hopefully, we can share some information that will be helpful and beneficial to you guys tonight. So, we'll start with who is eligible for APS services. Obviously, elders who are 65 years old and older, and also dependent adults, so those would be 18 years to 64, and those are folks who have a physical or mental limitation that restricts their ability to carry out normal activities, or to protect themselves. So, those folks are also covered under adult protective services. An adult protective services is mandated by law, so every county has to have an adult protective services department or agency to investigate reports of abuse, and to make contact with the victims, offer services and intervene when possible and appropriate. And, we have to remember that every action taken by APS must balance the duty to protect the safety of the individual, along with their right to self-determination. And we can talk a little bit more about that as we progress through the slides. So, the principles around APS, adults have a right to be safe, they have a right to make the decisions that they want to, even if they do not conform to societal norms, as long as those decisions do not harm others. They have a right to accept and refuse services. They're presumed to have decision-making capacity unless a court adjudicates otherwise. And they retain all their civil rights and constitutional rights unless those rights have been restricted by a court action. So, APS attempts to create a stable environment for vulnerable adults, to make sure that they're safe in their environment. It's not intended to be a long-term or ongoing case management activity, and we don't provide placement services. We do promote the self-sufficiency of the individual, and try to reduce the need for further reliance on APS. So, these graphs are rather interesting, as they speak to our aging population, as I'm sure most of you understand that. So, the population of age 65 and older, as you can see in the top slide, is increasing quite significantly in the year, this year and the years to come. And also, from age 85 and up, there's going to be a significant uptake in those individuals as we, as a society, continue to age, and therefore, services are going to have to be available for a lot more folks than has been in the past. So, what APS does is we respond and investigate reports of elder abuse. We do case, time-limited case management. We provide resource information to individuals, and some of the emergency services that we provide could be assistance with shelter or home protection. We provide food and transportation as necessary and as funding allows. We do participate in multidisciplinary team meetings, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Again, it's not intended to interfere with the lifestyle choices of individuals, nor to protect the individuals from the consequences of those choices. An APS client who has been abused may refuse services. They may withdraw consent to services or intervention by the agency. And if an APS worker believes that an elder or dependent adult is incapacitated to the extent that they cannot give or deny consent for APS, then we can provide a referral for a petition for temporary conservatorship through the Public Guardian's Office. Many of you are mandated reporters, and so, this slide talks about mandated reporters, and that is mandated through the Welfare and Institutions Code. And some of those mandated reporters include care custodians, healthcare providers, law enforcement agencies, medical examiners, first responders, of course, code enforcement agencies, animal control agencies, financial institutions, clergy, adult and child protective services, and also the county health and human service agencies, if we have contact with those vulnerable individuals. So, what, as a mandated reporter, must you report? Physical abuse, which also includes sexual abuse, neglect, financial abuse, abandonment, isolation, abduction, self-neglect, and mental suffering or emotional abuse. Those are reportable incidents, and you are, as a mandated reporter, required to report when the victim reports that they've been abused, if you have observed abuse, and if the abuse is reasonably suspected. And that also is stated in the Welfare and Institutions Code. So, as a mandated reporter, or as an individual, community members can report elder abuse. You can report as an individual, a non-mandated reporter anonymously. So, if you are a neighbor, a friend, family member, church member with somebody, you see somebody in the community, you can call and report abuse. As a mandated reporter, you are required to contact adult protective services, and you are required to fill out the SOC 341, and I have copies of those here. They are also available online at the Department of Social Services website. You can download those, you can print them off. So, what you're going to want to do is call our office, fill out that form, fax that form to us, and the fax number is provided there, or mail it to us within two days. So, what is reportable abuse? As we talked about, physical abuse, hitting, kicking, burning, over and under medicating, sexual abuse, which is unwanted sexual contact, exploitation, or even forcing an individual to view pornography. Abandonment, which is the desertion or willful forsaking of someone that you have the responsibility to care for, so leaving someone in their home with no means of care. Isolation, which would be preventing an individual from having contact, mail, telephone calls or visits from anybody, and putting those restrictions in place. Financial abuse, which is quite prevalent these days. Theft, misuse of funds or property, extortion, duress, or fraud. There are lots of scams going on right now, and so, those are reportable to us. Neglect, either by an individual who's caring for someone, would be the failure to provide food, clothing, or shelter, or healthcare for an individual. But that can also include self-neglect, an individual who is not providing those things for themselves. Those are reportable. And then, mental suffering, verbal assaults or threats, or causing fear in an individual. So, APS has three levels of response. When we get a report, level one is an immediate response, where we are required to respond within 24 hours of receiving this report. That would be where an individual is at immediate risk of harm. Somebody who has been left abandoned, has no means of care, or someone who has been physically assaulted, and the perpetrator still has access to that individual. We would respond within 24 hours, as quickly as we can, to that situation, but at the very least, within 24 hours. Level two, which is what most of our reports fall under, those are non-emergency responses, and we have to begin our investigation within 10 days of receiving that report. Level three is the information and referral. That's something that we do not respond to. The individual has called to ask for information about adult protective services, or the information that we receive does not meet the criteria for APS intervention. So, when we receive a report, these are the steps that we take. We determine the level of response, and we investigate those allegations. That investigation may include interviewing neighbors, family members, friends, physicians, you know, other folks who have contact with this individual. We also interview that individual. We refer to services and resources that are available to help mitigate the situation. We investigate activities with financial institutions, and we also work very closely with law enforcement when criminal activities are suspected, so in cases of fraud, or severe physical abuse, or neglect. We do work very closely with law enforcement in those situations. We do complete a comprehensive case assessment. If we keep the case open for 30 days, we have to do a service plan, to make sure that steps are being taken to mitigate the situation and provide safety. And then, we have to close the case as quickly as possible, because, again, we don't provide long-term case management. So, some of the legal issues that we run into with APS is, it is a voluntary program. We have to act within the consent of an adult who has mental capacity. If a crime has been committed, it is cross-reported to law enforcement whether that individual is okay with that or not. So, we are mandated to report to law enforcement any criminal activity that we are aware of. We do have to take into consideration the victim's mental capacity. If they are able to make their own decisions, and they have full legal rights at that time to refuse any services that we want to provide. This means, unfortunately, that they can live in a dirty home, they can hoard, they can give their money to anyone they choose, as long as there's no undue influence, and they have the capacity to make those decisions. Also, APS has no legal right to remove a person from their home against their will. So, we do rely on law enforcement to place a person on a 51-50 mental health hold when they are gravely disabled or causing harm to themselves or others due to a mental disorder. And we can call 911 for ambulance service if the person has an altered level of consciousness or is medically or mentally decompensating. What we cannot do is make someone change their lifestyle. We can't force them to get treatment. We can't force relatives to assist. We can't find placements. We do not have unlimited after-hours response. We only respond on emergency basis after hours. We cannot provide long-term case management, and we cannot put a conservatorship in place. So, these are some pictures of homes that we have been in, and, as I said earlier, folks have a right to choose how they live. And these pictures obviously show situations where most of us would not want to reside. But, if an individual has capacity, meaning they know who they are, where they are, what day it is, who's the president, basic questions, they can choose to live in a situation like that, and there's very little that we can do. These are just some of our statistics over the last couple of years. And we have, on staff, one full-time adult protective services social worker, who does primarily all of our APS investigations. We do have other social workers on staff that carry an in-home supportive services caseload, and on occasion, are available to assist in doing some investigations. But we primarily have one adult protective services social worker who covers the entire county. So, she's very busy. She's very efficient, she's very good at her job. But, as stated earlier, we have an aging population, and so, those numbers are just going to continue to climb. So, we do rely on the community to help us in assisting folks. So, we do have a lot of partner agencies that we work with when we are doing APS investigations. We work with Siskiyou Home Health Services, who provide short-term medical care. Meals on Wheels, Golden Umbrella, who provides rep-payee services, and also some other in-home services. Behavioral Health Services for Mental Health Services, our in-home supportive services staff, who assist folks with getting caregivers in the home, to assist them with their basic activities of daily living. Great Northern Corporation that also assists us quite a bit, local law enforcement agencies, public health, veteran services, social security, domestic violence, Far Northern Regional Center, and Victim Witness Services. As I stated earlier, we do participate in multidisciplinary teams, or MDT's. The WIC Code mandates that each county designates an adult protective services agency to establish and maintain multidisciplinary teams. And, the idea and the goal of MDT's is to discuss difficult cases. We work together, bringing in different agencies, different resources, to address specifics to a case. One of the goals of MDT's is that it's very confidential. We're dealing with an individual's life, and very private life. And so, during an MDT meeting, we're going to talk about some things, and different services that we may be able to put in place, to alleviate the concerns that have brought this case forward. So, we hope for, one of the goals is inter-agency cooperation, that each individual who attends the MDT contributes something that's going to help this individual. So, we have members who attend the meetings from various different entities, including the Public Guardian's Office and Public Health, Behavioral Health, physicians, hospital personnel, long-term care ombudsman's office, hospice, legal services. So, lots of folks are coming together to assist in providing services, to alleviate concerns for this individual. So, we do very strictly adhere to protection of privacy and confidentiality. We're expected to work, to bring the information that we get through the MDT back to our agencies and try and figure out what we can bring to the table to assist this individual. Information from the MDT, if a member that we want to be there cannot attend, they're asked to provide information to another person who would be attending that MDT. And then, there's a high level of respect for each individual who is in attendance at the MDT. We start and end on time. The presentations are provided to each individual there, and myself, as the adult protective services supervisor, does coordinate and facilitate those meetings. So, as I said, we do talk about, at an MDT, some of the most difficult cases. So, a situation where, you know, there's an individual who is alone, they can't get out to the store, they can't provide services for themselves, they can't get to medical appointments, they can't keep their houses clean. We may invite in-home supportive services staff to attend. Meals on Wheels, the senior center, that person's physician, to talk about how we can assist this person in staying safe, and getting their needs met in their home. And the goal for all of us is to keep individuals in their home as long as possible. So, we're trying to work with lots of different resource providers to get services in place, to assist those individuals in staying in their home, because that's really where they want to be. So, the case, the MDT meeting, we're looking at creative problem solving. So, we do have to step outside of the box, and look at all kinds of different creative ways to bring services and resources to that individual. The individual is not talked about by name, because without a release of information, that information is private. So, we do only discuss that person by their initials throughout the whole case meeting. If a service plan is put in place and services are to be provided, we do get a release of information to talk with those team members who would be providing services. And then, we follow up after the meeting to make sure that those services have indeed been put in place, and to see how they are working, and if they are, in actuality, providing assistance to that person. So, I talked a little bit earlier about capacity, and an individual's right to make choices for themselves. As an adult, we all have that right. When a person is found to lack the capacity to make those decisions, meaning they can't remember who they are, or who their neighbor is, they can't remember to eat, they can't get themselves the resources they need to keep themselves safe, that person may be referred to the Public Guardian's Office. The Public Guardian's Office is, they serve as a conservator for a person, or their estate, when that person has been deemed by the court not to have the capacity to do those things for themselves. The only individuals or entities who can make referrals to the Public Guardian's Office are adult protective services, behavioral health services, or the Superior Court. And there are a couple of different types of conservatorships that could go into place. The LPS, or Lanterman-Petras Short Conservatorship, is ordered by the court when a person is found unable to provide for their own basic personal needs of food, clothing, or shelter as a result of a severe mental disorder or illness, and are unable to accept those necessities of life from a third party. Those persons are considered to be gravely disabled. Or a probate conservatorship, which is ordered by the Superior Court for those persons suffering from impairment and/or severe dementia, and are found unable to properly provide for their own personal needs for physical health, food, clothing, or shelter. And it's also used to make medical decisions on behalf of those mentally incompetent to do so for themselves. So, when a referral is received by the Public Guardian's Office, they do their own investigation. And if warranted, based on the information that is discovered during their investigation, they file a petition with the Superior Court for conservatorship. And then, if that is granted by the court, the Public Guardian's Office acts as conservator for those individuals. So, a conservatorship
By the Public Guardian's
And should be the last resort. And, that's because the mere act of a conservatorship takes away many of a person's civil rights and liberties. And so, unless that person truly is incapacitated, we don't want to take their rights away from them. So, as I said, I have some resources here that might help you to kind of understand what we do. One of our resources that we use quite often is the Siskiyou County Senior Resource Guide. These are very beneficial. They have all the resources and services that are available to elders and dependent adults. They're provided by the senior center in Wyrika, and you can go in there and get as many as you want. They're very helpful. And then, also, another one of our resources that our adult protective services social workers use is a file of life. And this has all kinds of information on it, for the individual, who their physician is, if they have any allergies, what medications they take, emergency contacts, all sorts of things. And it goes in this little packet, and it has a magnet on the back. And so, it goes right on the refrigerator, so first responders can always look for this. And it should provide information that will help them if they need assistance with finding family members, or who the physician is, those types of things. And I also made some copies of the SOC 341, which is the elder abuse reporting form. So, again, they are available online, but I also provided some here. If you would like to take some, and you can just fax them to our office if you need to. And then, another thing I wanted to share with law enforcement who are here, is there is a training down in Redding in June, and it's a post-certified training, and it is specifically centered on investigating elder abuse. So, any law enforcement, if you are interested, I have the flyers here that might help you to get some more information on that. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, I do. Thank you for being here. As a mandated reporter, I'm clergy, I've been for 20-some years, so I understand that part. My concern comes to this county, and activities of maybe younger folks that are adults, getting help. I've heard of them being in the hospital or something, and there's been no type of connection with APS, and that still remains my concern, because I've seen it. So, how is that addressed now? I didn't hear it here, I heard that they can say no, but if they're subject to hurting others or themselves, something has to be done about that, and I didn't see that connection here. Am I missing something?
Well, if they are a danger to themselves or others, they would probably be referred for a 51-50 evaluation through Behavioral Health. And so, they would assess their situation. Again, for those adults who are under the age of 65, unless they are deemed a dependent adult, meaning they are unable to make those decisions to keep themselves safe, or they have the physical or a mental disorder that prevents them from keeping themselves safe, they are not a dependent adult, and therefore, they don't fall under the criteria for APS intervention. And that And that's a difficult thing because they are left out there. And I know for us, that's a difficult thing to address as well because we don't have the resources or the services to address those situations. And so, I know that falls on our communities as a whole. And so, just trying to find other resources that might be able to assist. And I know mental health is, is one of the big issues. And so, Behavioral Health Services, which also provides drug and alcohol counseling and assistance and treatment programs if that's an issue. And so, those are some of the resources that we would refer to for those individuals.
And just a follow-up question. Is there something going to change that? Because you see a limited after hours response emergency room, emergency only, but I see that when they're taken to emergency by authorities and then, there's no connection to mental health. I've seen it, I've heard it. So, is that going to be something addressed going forward as we look at our homelessness population that we're addressing as a county and a city?
I think that's something that we all are going to have to address at some point in time. Again, those individuals don't fall under the criteria for Adult Protective Services, but they do fall under our community concerns. And so, I think as a community, we're going to have to address those, find a way to address those. And I don't know what the answer to that question is.
I thought so, that's why.
There's a couple of communities in this county that have started some community care collaboratives. There's currently one going out in the Tulley Lake Butte Valley area and one has just begun in Dunsmere. They're groups of individuals, concerned community members, as well as professionals that get together and talk about some of the most concerning cases in the community, whether it be a child that needs some things in the Child Protective Services and can't serve it, or mental health needs within the community, or specific cases on a confidential basis. But sometimes, that person that brings that case, such as clergy member that can come to that meeting and bring a case saying, "I have this person," they're looking for these resources. It's a room full of people who work in those different jobs each day and have resources that sometimes they can pool together and find some ways to help those people that unfortunately, don't fit into the guidelines of any system right now. Mental health has their criteria, law enforcement has those that they can arrest, fire has those that they can't respond to because it's not a medical emergency. Every organization has their limitations as to what they can respond to and help. But sometimes, those community groups can respond on an individual level to some of our most concerning community members and reach out to them and get them connected with the services that they may not know how to connect to themselves but are readily available to them. So, it's a thought for your community to start a group like that. They meet once a month. And it's, like I said, it's pretty open. It's just in its formation point right now. I believe the Butte Valley one started late, early fall, and the Dunsmere one started in December. And it's been a really positive process that people have been able to bring some of those cases away. Sometimes, it's a referral to APS or CPS that comes out of those meetings. Sometimes, it's just better collaboration with the schools on a child or a family. Sometimes, it's awareness by law enforcement agency that this home needs, has activity that needs to be watched. So, there's just different avenues of what can come out of that meeting. So, it is an idea to put forward in your community.
Just my last question. This is tax-supported this entire agency, right? So, our taxes are paying for these services, right?
We are state, we are state and federal funded.
Federal funded, yes.
Okay. I see a connection with us paying taxes and services being offered or available for folks, not just referred to another group to. So, I will follow with that.
And just to follow up with that, adult services is one of the most underfunded areas that we have in our social services. Now, we have this huge aging population coming to play. It is constantly under, under, underfunded. We are working with the state. In fact, I was down there today, meeting with them, not on adults, but on children. But adults is always at the table, but unfortunately, it always gets cut. So, we do what we can. It's pretty amazing that we only have one assigned APS worker, but she's wonderful. She is amazing. She gets these cases done, so.
She does, yes.
Appreciate your honesty of your answer. Thank you.
Actually, you beat me to one of my questions. I've gone, I watched the graph of the increasing aged and my question was, is your budget increasing?
Yes.
So, okay. You've already asked and answered. So, when you said you respond to a complaint, is that response, is that request a written response or a telephone response, or how is that response?
In-person response. If we get a report of elder or dependent adult abuse, we have to make physical contact with that person unless the information that we have does not allow us to do that, the address is wrong, or the person has moved out of the area. But we have to make physical contact with that person, lay eyes on that person and their home environment because that's what we're investigating, is that individual and their safety within their home.
I get that. But when somebody calls APS, is it the phone call that will initiate that? Or does it have to be a written?
No. The phone call followed up, we do need that written report, but that does not initiate. The phone call is what initiates it. That allows us to put the information into our database and get a referral. We will actually print out a written referral based on the information that's provided to us over the phone or in-person. Folks come into our office and make reports all the time, so.
Next question. Where's the Senior Center?
The Senior Center in Wyrika is near the high school.
Okay.
And then, there is also a Senior Center in Mount Shasta.
And where's that?
Park.
At the park?
Oh.
It's the things you don't know for not asking, huh? Okay. I do want to thank you for presenting this. There's a lot of public that actually watches the city council meetings, very informative for a lot of folks. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we have probably.
Yeah. The groups you have in Butte Valley and Dunsmere, interested in those, are, do you initiate the group? I mean, how do, can, did you have the manpower to? It seems as if, the big thing here is education. Now, if we can get the public involved in this and get some members to actually, because we all hear, you know, whispers, you know, they're not taking care of so-and-so. You know, this, that. And we don't really have a network to go through to take care of that or even to look at it closer or even know what we can and can't get involved with. It would be very helpful if we could have somebody from your office to come down if we were going to try to establish a, you know, a committee or a group. But I think, I really think we need something through you, maybe with the Resource Center to initiate this group.
Yeah, we would initially work with the Family Resource Centers to get the word out and we could come down and talk to anybody who wants to listen to us and educate and inform and then, kind of, keep going from there. But it's really a grassroots. It's community taking care of community.
Who is spearheading the Dunsmere movement?
Yeah, Jill.
Jill Phillips.
Okay, I know Jill, okay.
From Shasta Training.
And I know, I participate in the Dunsmere Community Event monthly. And a lot of their city council folks attend, school personnel, a local realtor is there, medical professionals, Adult Protective Services and Child Protective Services, lots of community folks, including the Resource Center staff. So, there are a lot of different entities that come together on a grassroots level and just talk about some of the concerns that the community has and then, how to address those issues. And, you know, the one in Dunsmere has come up with some pretty neat ideas on how to assist folks in the community, especially, you know, children who maybe don't have family members around to help them. And then, the elders who are isolated and have nobody, you know, how do we bridge that gap? How do we help both of those at the same time? And they've come up with some really good ideas on how to get the community involved in just helping their neighbors. So, it really is a good opportunity.
One of the things that's always, I've talked about it for a long time, is it seems as if we have so many different entities and people not really working together. We do have a service here and we're up with our seniors as far as getting people to shopping and to medical appointments and things like that. And I really think it's important that we work with you, we work with anybody we can to let people know what we're doing so we can connect with them and you can use us. And as far as the funding stream goes, funding's never going to happen until you have the, until you have the support. You get enough people saying, demanding that we have to do this, that's when it'll happen. If you sit back and expect it to happen, it's never going to happen, folks. Never.
No, it's not. And so, I think that's when we have to come together and just, you know, get creative because nobody has money, you know? But together, we can, you know, come up with some creative ways of dealing with situations. And I think that's what it takes. But it does take the networking and making sure that we, that we know that you have these services to provide transportation. I didn't know that. So, that's helpful information to have. So, you know, how do we coordinate those?
Come down and we'll have a, see if we can get something together.
Have a sit-down because we have the library available. The Resource Center has seniors meeting at least once a week. And Great Northern has a nice little new, brand-new meeting room. So, there's plenty of places to gather and get some seniors together. I don't think a lot of seniors understand, seniors hang around seniors, I'm sure, and so, it would be, this kind of stuff is beneficial for them.
Sure.
Sue, anything?
No. What you're saying, in these two communities where they started this, it was the local people that said, "We need to do this." They got together, brought in, and then invited you.
Yes.
Okay.
And Jill Phillips-McLean is helping to facilitate those meetings and setting up some of the reach-outs and helping to run those meetings. So, I can reach out to her and let her know that your community's interested?
I can do that. I'm fine.
Yeah. You know Jill. We all know Jill.
I don't.
She was my brother, I should not have called.
Oh, Jill. You know Jill.
Okay. I guess, thank you very much. We do appreciate it and thanks for your time.
Yeah, question?
Would you be willing to come to a private meeting?
Absolutely. Can I make my son be there?
I was going to say, do we have to twist your arm?
Perfect.
You know, just for a private meeting.
Absolutely, yes.
I know a lot of my.
We can offer both adult and child protective services training, mandated reporter, other just informational training to any community organization that would like it, whether it be Rotary or otherwise to get the information out. We're always more than happy to stop by.
Thank you for reaching out. Appreciate it.
I'll leave these resources here on the table.
Well, we can wait for you to clear. It's fine.
Be careful.
See, it didn't take long to take it all down, did it?
No, it's always quicker taking it down than it is setting it up.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is non-agenda public comment. Now's the time that the council sets aside moments in time for our public to address the council on items that are not before, on the current agenda. The council cannot take any current action. I encourage the council to limit discussion and we're ready to go.
Hi, Holly, Hansard, 211 Pine Street and 334 East Lake Street. Last city council member, I requested that I might be on this city council agenda. And last week or the week before, I requested of city administrator and two city council members if I could be on this agenda, and it was declined. So, and as part of that, I received a letter after I requested to be discussed, what I'd like to discuss, I received a letter on the 12th telling me that the process is going forward to revoke, or whatever term it is, all four permits of my fence that I have been struggling since Sue's house burned down and my house burned down. But I have not been able to rebuild, as Sue knows, and you guys should know, a house. But I have spent the last three years building my fence. So, I was told that there was, it was reasoned that there were, you, whatever, please don't laugh, that you're considering revoking my permits is for insufficient progress. As I understand it, 180 days is the legal thing for, if someone hasn't done anything for 180 days. Yes, for a house, but that's the standard for the state of California. I would like you to vacate the city planning commission in consideration of revoking my permits and also the following one. It seems to me that there is injustice. And if you choose to giggle behind closed doors or whatever as some sort of punishment for me because I wasn't in favor of pot or I am in a wawa suit against you, I'm so sorry. But please, Sue, you have called yourself a friend to me, please come by, speak to me and look at how beautiful my fence is and look at the effort, Stacy, if you would, I would love to show you that I've made since I received the notice of, I don't know where the 90 days came up. I have given a Herculean effort in this winter to complete my fence and I have not made insufficient progress by the state of California. I think it's inappropriate and incorrect for there to be legal proceedings to cause punishment or harm against me, my person, my property, and to do legal action and a threat of legal action against me for insufficient progress. I have, since November, I have done the more expensive wood with very expensive exterior paint to make it look very attractive. I've gone cedar planks. And if I have more time, which I will, by the grace of God, I will help my neighbors build their fences too. Recently, I, with permission of Paul, I did a quick spray on the fence to make it not as glary and I will continue as resource allows to do what I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Any other public comment?
Hi, Rebecca Slus, 7831 Sugar Pine Road. Over the last month, I think it was right before or right after this last council meeting, I've been to city, the city offices three times on three different occasions and left messages with the city manager or for the city manager and the Public Works Director inquiring, well, asking for a callback because I'd like more information about what's happening at South Weed and the development that happened on the east side of the freeway in the past. And I haven't received any reply either in phone or on email. And I'm kind of feeling frustrated. I went a couple of days ago as well. And I know when I, when school gets out, by the time I can get down here, it's about 3:45, 3:30, so people are gone for the day, but I would like a reply. It's kind of, it's a lot, so if you could please direct your staff to reply to questions.
Do you have a list of written questions of some sort?
Well, I mean, I wanted to have a conversation with them and ask, I didn't want to do the formal FOIA because that gets onerous for staff and for us too. And then, I worked for a county before and it's kind of like, once a FOIA comes in, "Oh, well, she didn't say that." I just wanted, questions about how much money was spent on the development on the road to nowhere? I think it was a block grant, how much money the city spent, what the block grant was for, things like that. And then, the progress of the Loves Truck Stop or the proposed Truck Stop, what's going on, timeframe, you know, just have a conversation.
I would encourage you to take your questions written because just on the questions you have just asked aren't readily available on everybody's shirt sleeves. So, you're asking to involve a whole lot of staff, there's probably individuals that may know every one of those answer, but now, you're asking all staff to be present for, so if you would present them in a question format, I believe it would be easier for staff to give you answers. And then, if you had follow-up questions, that would be, everybody would have a little bit more idea of where, what you're looking for.
Okay, I understand that, but I haven't heard from anyone. I haven't asked any questions yet, really. Just said I have questions about South Weed. Please email me or call me back.
Well, if you, I tell you what, if you make some written questions, make, address them to me and I'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
May I add something? I know some of the things you've asked about, they've been talked about at various meetings. So, and I see if an answer's not applicable to someone and they keep going for another answer for appealing or something. I'm not saying that's your case. But I'm saying the image you have talked about hasn't been addressed in past meetings as far as the possibility of businesses, what's happening on different sides and the grant money. I remember those, and I'm not good at remembering things. But I remember those numbers. But I'm thinking, is that a recognizable avenue to review for yourself prior to coming to?
Oh, the minutes? Yeah, I can do, I can do that. I think the block grant is older. I don't, I don't remember seeing that. I mean, of course, the Love stuff, I'm familiar with that. But more, I'm wondering, yeah. So I was really curious about the east side and what kind of money's been going in there because there's a lot of infrastructure already there.
That's archived stuff, so I'm sure we have it. We would have to dig for it.
Okay. Yeah, and that's not on the internet because I started there first. Can I have, since we're going back and forth, can I have a little bit more time?
Actually, close it up. I mean, so that we have other, I don't know if we have other questions out there, but go ahead with one or two more.
Well, I just wanted to state publicly, there was a commenter on the Stop Loves Truck Stop page that was a fake ID. It was, I mean, a fake name and a fake person, so it was a fake identity. And they were pretty rude. And what did they say? They made some remarks that implied that we were bothering you and that we should basically be quiet because we're gonna make everyone angry. And then, so the person's picture was actually a university professor from back east and the name was fake. And so Eric Ziller did, was able to trace the IP address. But I wanted to state publicly that it's a, it's a, it's a crime to impersonate or have a fake identity on social media and to stalk, you know, people need to say who they are. And you can't have a fake presence. So that's...
A little like getting an anonymous letter.
Yeah. Where, where was that?
It was on the Stop Loves, like, Facebook page. It's not up anymore. Because I looked at it.
I didn't know they had one.
Yeah, they have. Yeah, we have one. You can join. But I just want to put that out there. That, well, just to see what's going on. You might be interested. But use your real ID, please, and, or your real identity. So that's just out there now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
I did not know that.
Marilyn Blankenship, 1460 North Davis. This is really trivial. But we have a contract with the, having our garbage picked up. And it goes from November 1st until March 1st. And in our area, often, our alleyway, like especially several of the alleyways, you can't even get through to them, get, the garbage truck will get stuck. We get snow through April. And it was a few years ago that the council decided this. And so, so everybody, some people moved theirs to the alleyway. And then some people knew the garbage truck wasn't gonna get off, so, up it. So they moved it, they left them out front. And now the poor guy has to go two places. He has to go get another truck in order to get up the alleyway. And the city itself, last year, that alleyway behind Liberty was such a mess that they got their equipment stuck. So I'm not sure why we go back and forth with our garbage can. But...
One, I believe it was for snow removal purposes in the narrow streets.
Oh, uh-huh. But now they can't even get up the...
But I guess we don't really want them stuck either. We'll have to have somebody look at that.
I don't know. So, that, I just was, thank you for...
Where's Craig today? He's not here today. We'll, we'll put it on his desk when he gets back in.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Any other questions or comments from, done? We're done? All right. We'll move on to council members' announcements, meetings, reports, and comments. We'll start off with Councilman Green. One.
Stacy Green or Kim?
Councilman Stacy Green.
Yes. Mayor, I just have a few, just one selection. I've just been watching how the community's doing on different things. And of course, the aftermath of the Florida shooting. I spoke with our chief and he mentioned how activities are going. And I think I'd like to have him, not today, I didn't tell you that, but like to have them explain what they're doing to address the needs for the youth safety as in elementary and high schools. Things are happening. I've asked some students, because you know, I'm with the youth, I've asked them what's happening. Things are happening. But I think it's good for the public to know what's going on because it hasn't been public. But yet, they've done some activities. I think that's great for us to know what's being done to help protect our youth and young adults in these school services that are here.
Do you want Martin to make a report or do you want to prepare a report?
Oh, I, yeah, he can prepare. I can't make it, but...
Do you want to do it now or do you want to come back to us at next meeting?
Come back at the next meeting. It'd probably be better. I could be a little more informative.
Okay.
In high school, we did an Alice training last week.
Right, I've heard of that. But I want a collective. But you, maybe partner with the chief. That'd be some collectiveness. Might get some more information on your part.
You're working it.
Tip for tap.
But that would be good. But it's just, it just, I was, I was very proud to see what they're doing. It bothered me when I watched that thing and cried, when I see those things happening. I knew that it could happen here in our school area. But I want to know what they have done to protect our kids. And they've done some great things. I think it's good for people to notice that. Thank you. That's all. Can't say anything.
I, I have nothing.
Counselor Green?
Well, actually, yes, I do. This Saturday is the Weed Museum Dinner. I think they're sold out because I think it's like over 220-some people. And I don't think we even have that many chairs at the hall. But, and then next Saturday is the Chinese auction for the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Sue?
I don't think I have anything.
Bob? All right.
He's got a list.
Put him on, put him on three minutes.
No, three minutes. Hey, the first thing I wanted to say, I wanted to blow some smoke at my council members and staff. You know, when I first got on this council nine years ago, it was common knowledge that the goal was to get out before 6 o'clock. 25 minutes. I'm Italian. I'm telling you the truth.
We're late.
Okay. Now, but I want you to...
You're wrong.
What I want you to know is that the city has improved, we've come a long ways in nine years. I mean, a lot of things are happening. We, and it's about the conversations we have here with our public and with one another. And the follow-through on staff. So cheerleader stuff. Also, the, the senior bus, I have the opportunity to be a temporary driver for the, on Fridays, for our senior bus. And we're going to Lake Shastina. And last week was one of the most pleasurable afternoons I've ever had, I think. I mean, it was just the gratitude that the people in Lake Shastina have for our services, for us even to think about them out there. We're charging, we charge them $3 a person, which is very minimal. But, and they think so too. But there really is, I just want to reinforce the fact that a lot of people in Lake Shastina would like to be part of Weed. And they feel like they're part of Weed. They shop here and, so. Also, I'd like to talk about, you know, just real quick on the water issues. And everybody probably read the paper and understand that, or probably confused regarding the Wawa lawsuit. But that still is going. Basically, what is happening there, and Bob, follow me and cover me even if I get off base, is to, that Wawa is suing us regarding the water lease, saying that we should have done a, a SEQA review for the water lease to be effective. And we chose not to do that. And that, that's where we are right now with, with the Wawa lawsuit. But at the same time, we have, Roseburg is suing the city. And that's basically because of the change in the attitude with the council, feeling that we had enough information that we can state that the water is ours, that we're saying that the water is ours, at least have somebody check the clerical error that happened. Because we had, we did pay, we paid the water master fees from 1983 to 2014. The California Water Law states that the owner of the water right shall pay the water master fees. We paid that. We have new information regarding the justification or the validation of the 1982 letter when international paper left. So that still has to happen. But we're in a bind. It seems if we're dealing with a, the SEQA review, that will be null and void if the water's actually ours. So we're, we, it's very confusing right now. And I want the public to understand that, that it's just about, I believe it's just about how these things are placed in front of the court. But it, it is gonna work out. We just have to be patient and, and hopefully, we can get it resolved as soon as possible. So that's all I have. Coach?
Okay. I'll just make a quick report. Is not only are, is the bus actually picking up seniors at Shastina, we do have a few seniors also from Shastina that attend our Monday luncheon. And our Monday luncheon is averaging 40. Sue was there last time.
I was there on Monday. They had 48.
So I'm being very, at least, I'm not, I'm not exaggerating beyond any belief. It's actually probably averaging about 45. But I haven't looked at official numbers. But, so we may at some point need to dip into, I'm asking our current director to take a look at the number crunching to see if we're actually doing. I think we're doing okay, but we may need something. So I believe that the senior transport is well-received. We have almost always a full bus coming to the Monday senior event. We have a lot of folks from Weed. It's, it's just a well-received process. So if there are some seniors out there that are not attending, come on down and have some conversation. Lunches are pretty good, at least the ones I've had. And as I'm looking out in this room, there's a couple seniors anyway. And by the way, anybody on staff is also welcome to show up. So, to see what we're doing. I also was, I'm part of a couple small organizations, and I know nobody pays attention to them much. But one is the Call Your Information Interprettive Center. And there's another one called the Siski Revitalization Network, which is another Ford Foundation-funded process, which is trying to revitalize and reinvigorate small downtowns in our county. So they've invested fairly heavily in this. They are going to be a very short-lived, probably, organization. But their impacts could be significant as far as developing hotspots in our county so that when people go to their cell phones, you'll be able to develop itineraries. You'll be able to, so if you have tourists that come in, you'll be able to pick up on your cellphone and say, "Hey, I want to go to Tulley Lake. What's in Tulley Lake?" And you can select a method to go to the lava beds, to the petroglyphs, is that the right term? Or the Wildlife Refuge. So anyway, interesting things, and it all comes about from coordination. And the network is also linking in with the Call Your Rest Stop. So everything is kind of moving in combination. So that's all I've got. I should add that we have taken, taken our website up at the Call Your Center and transformed it from a web base to a more of a mobile base, which was a, a new move, which I think everybody's gonna have to look forward to because it's very hard to view a web-designed platform on your mobile device. So, anyway, it'll be changing. Okay, so let's move on to item A, traffic fines, fees, parking permits. Council will consider introduction of ordinance 445-2018, establishing regulations for the issuance of parking permits for city properties. Just so the public's aware, as we've had requests to make some parking available to some of the student and where the, where the students are housed. Martin?
Before you, is a request as a follow-up from last meeting where you had a local property or apartment owner request to use some of our city's parking facilities for permitted parking, overnight parking. Currently, those parking lots are limited to no overnight parking, and that is enforced. Her request is to allow a permit to be issued to tenants that she could purchase and allow them to park overnight. Problem that we have faced over the last few years is that those city parking lots have been used for storage of vehicles for other tenants, other property owners in that area. And so that's why the enforcement was taking place. Consideration for this parking permit was, was done with the anticipation that, that it is a very common thing for parking permits to be issued in communities like ours and throughout California. So what we have done at this point is looked into the types of fees that they charge for those permits on an annual basis. And we found that they ranged anywhere from $80 a year to $400 a year per car that was parked in there. We also found that, that a lot of those facilities were, were basically utilized by, by non-tenants at times, just as a parking area. And so our concern is, is that we establish a fee that is ample to prevent it to become a storage yard. And so a fee, as an example, if you set it low enough to where anybody can park there, it's cheaper to park in a parking lot with a $20 annual fee than it is to worry about moving it onto the street or down, down the street to avoid citations. So what we've put together is an ordinance to allow parking permits. If you so choose to do that, we've also added a resolution to establish the feasibility of adding those particular parking places or parking lots that are on Clay Street and other lots within the community to this ordinance for parking permits. And we're also suggesting that you give us some input on what type of permit fee you would like to charge for that.
Council, questions?
Next question, if this would be going to other areas, because I see that all over town, being a resident. And my second part of that question is fees. You probably would be able to tell us what's the average among other cities, our size, our, our demographics, our population content?
The fees, the fees comparable to us are pretty wide-ranging. And they are from $80 to $400. $400 seems pretty extensive amount for, for an annual parking permit. But I would think that we would still want to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $100 or so to, to try and, and manage the program.
$10 a month is $120 a year. I don't, I don't think, I mean, $10 a month sounds pretty cheap. $120 a year, not necessarily. But it can, will we be able to isolate these as to this, the lady that was here, her apartment building? And then didn't we have another apartment building that was interested in it also? Would we be able to isolate to those people? So to a, if a, if a car has, let's say, a sticker on the window, it better have that license plate so we don't, like, trade stickers?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
I, I think we need a permanent sticker that's, that's capable of being on a windshield or a window of some sort that if you peel off, it doesn't stick on the next car. But to answer your question, that's not the only facility that I think we would get requests from. There's several apartment buildings on Main Street alone that, that don't have ample parking now. And they have always been looking for different areas to park.
To me, I think, are you, are you okay?
Yeah.
One of my thoughts is what we're trying to accommodate a little bit is the student population. And I would probably, just for thoughts, make the fee at least $250 with the College of the Siski's discount for enrolled students, which would alleviate some of that burden on, on the students themselves, but then discourage general public from becoming just an overall parking zone.
And my, my things, I remember the discussion four years ago that some businesses had some concerns about that. So I don't, I don't want to target just for students. That's why I said residents or business folks, whoever needs that, that opportunity. Because some business cases might come up. Maybe they're doing a remodel and they go into the, the hours of the night. I'm thinking, whatever business on, whatever Main Street. That's something that we want to look at and be aware of because some businesses might have some... That's something that we want to look at and be aware of, because some businesses might have some extended hours if they're doing something like a promotion, an event, or something. That, am I remembering correctly about four years, we had the discussion regarding business having that concern too?
We've had a lot of discussion on Main Street parking, without a doubt. And we've had businesses on Main Street, and I can think right off the top of my head, the Bowling Alley had some concerns a few years ago about their workers leaving late enough that they may have been in violation of the ordinance or something like that. But the discussion that we had in a staff meeting was whether or not we would be violating or creating a discrimination to specifically say that it's only available to students. And I think we need to avoid that.
Well, can't, not students, I mean, can't we say to the people that are living in these apartments because they're the ones with the problem? It doesn't matter if they're a student. I mean, we're not saying a student. It could be.
Well, I'm just thinking, discounts are allowed in a lot of places for students. Again, so I would not limit the parking. He wants residents. I say fine with residents, but there is a target community that is probably most impacted, and that's the student population. Plus, it supports COS, and that's kind of a second little.
And maybe we ought to have in there somewhere, chief, that the vehicle needs to be operatable.
I agree. We have not asked for you to.
It actually moves every day, not?
Yeah, we haven't asked for you to remove the seventy-two-hour parking violation that's there. That's still consistent with it, to where if that vehicle isn't moving in seventy-two hours, just like if it was on the street, it would be in violation.
Is there any comment from the public on any of this?
I have a suggestion that maybe when we are issuing them to the people who do live in those apartments, we have some kind of confirmation from the landlord that, yes, they are a tenant. And so she could give them something proving that they are a tenant, and then they bring that here for their parking permit or.
Mr. Mayor, that was going to be my question. Is that going to be with the, to the resident or the property owner? It seems as if the property owner will know how many they're going to need. If we, is that going to be issued to the property owner or in their collecting the fee through their rent? They're paying for it, or are we?
The request that we had presented to us was from the property owner, and she was suggesting that she buy those permits for her tenants.
I like that. Is that what?
Well, another property owner might not want to do that, so they would.
Yeah, so whoever wants to pay for it, I'm sure she'll pay herself back somehow.
Right, yeah. She said she'd just get it out of rent.
Right, exactly.
Holly, name and address?
Three three four East Lake Street, two eleven Holly Handsford. On the issue of parking, as a little side note, but as we turn right, no offense, to the Weed store, but it seemed to me that a good place for a red line would be, because we cannot see when we're turning right. It's so dangerous right there. I'm glad there's a red line. I'm glad the police are on it at the grocery outlet. But I would like the city council, as you're considering parking and parking solutions, to look at that Weed store for the visibility, for the safety, when we try to go into traffic and turn right.
I can just speak to that as an employee. The owners are going to be taking care of that very soon. We've talked about that. Red and green for no parking and loading zone, so that's more pickler.
Oh, right. They're on it. We don't need a law for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Anybody else?
I wanted to add, or ask, it's a soft note, but for people that are attending the bar. Now, if they leave their vehicle because they can't drive, how is that addressed by this adage if they're in the parking lot? Because number one, my thing is that I'm not supporting drinking that you're over the accountability, but I am supporting that people be able to have that freedom. So that's kind of a misnomer for coming from a minister, I know, and a clergyman, I know. But is that addressed by this? Is there a concern there?
I don't see this addressing that. I think it would be impossible for us to, at two o'clock in the morning, issue a permit. But we, in the city of Weed, we have for many years, if the person would call us and say, I've had too much to drink, I'm not going to drive home, they don't necessarily receive a citation unless it's an ongoing issue.
So it's been addressed?
Yeah.
I just noticed a few cars, and people I know, I was like, oh, their cars are again. Whoa. As I'm driving late at night.
Sometimes it never leaves.
Yeah.
It's broke down.
Is it operable?
Is it operable? And we have another comment? Name and address, please.
Elizabeth, two four two Main Street. Speaking of parking, and I have spoken to Justin Nichols.
Justin Mayberry.
Oh, Justin Mayberry. Martin, I'm tired. I've had a kind of a stressful last couple hours.
It's Martin Mayberry.
Yeah, yeah. The chief, the chief, no. So right now, the businesses, as you come down Main Street, everyone on the left-hand side, we've been parking on the right-hand side of the street because there's no businesses on the right-hand side of the street. One of my employees is actually handicapped and in a wheelchair. And there's no handicap parking spots or anything anywhere on Main Street. So on our side of the street, he parks at the end of Inez because that's where the sidewalk slopes and there's a ramp. So of course, all of a sudden, there's a new business in town, and the veterinarian office there has been upset because our disabled person has parked on that corner to be able to get up the ramp to come into work. So I don't know much about, you know, city ordinances with parking and so on and so forth, but I mean, is having some disabled parking spots designated somewhere an issue? The first couple of times he came to work, he was, you know, jumping the curb down past the Resource Center. And I said, no, 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 you can't be doing that. You need to go down where the ramp is. The businesses on that side of the street are courteous to one another by parking across the street because, like, we know Thursday is Resource Center Day. So none of us park on our side of the street to accommodate. Everyone's been very accommodating to each other. But I don't know if it's come up or if Martin, right, this man? If anybody's gotten a call, because all of a sudden, there was like this issue with even the businesses in the parking, so. I don't know what can be done. It seems a little between people being residents and businesses, so I don't know how you would solve parking issues.
We haven't had much of a parking issue over the last ten years, so just to address that. But I think maybe between Martin and Craig that you should be able to... I don't know where, I think the only place it's available is right where you, right where this person's parking. I don't know if we can use the US Banks has a couple parking. Parking lots have to have a designated handicap. I don't know if streets do, do they?
And that is public parking, from what I was told.
Often do.
Okay.
It does a public service.
Even at the corner then, or something like that?
It's just she got a little upset, and I'm going to call, in two hours, I'm going to call the police station. And he's like, my placard's up, I'm sorry. It's just, so I kind of didn't know the rules and really regulations when it comes to handicap.
It's not reserved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a two-hour limit on IAS?
No, as you might recall, months ago, within the last year, you had business owners on Main Street approach you and ask that you remove the time limit parking on Main Street, and that has been done. So it is all unlimited parking, except for the hours of three AM to seven AM.
Okay, so we're all okay?
Well, now we want to put it back. No, I'm kidding.
Unnecessarily put it back, but a handicap spot may be, we haven't had much of an issue with handicap parking, but I mean...
Maybe we could get somebody down to adjust the curbs and sidewalks and.
Get crazy now.
That's a Bob question.
Another lifetime.
I don't think any of us are capable anymore, I have to tell you that.
Mr. Mayor, I think that what should happen, a study should be seen based on our demographics of our business owners and the businesses there and the residents, what's necessary. And I know that's out there from a public perspective that shows what should be there based on what businesses and parking spots are there. And there's national stats with that. I'm sure of that.
So we can research you a little bit, kind of maybe take a look.
Mayor, one more note on that. We're talking about the, our Clay Street parking lot. I talked to Craig regarding that there, we already have two lights back there on poles, but they're very simple lights that just shine right down. And talked to him about putting like three lights on each post. He's going to be working on that. But I think we really need to be, here again, understand that that parking lot at the downtown area is ever to get busy again, we really have, that has to be one of our priorities down there, just a reminder.
Okay, so we have two actions before us. Is that correct?
Yes, you have a first reading on an ordinance to amend the ordinance that's currently in place. And then you have a resolution which is adding those particular parking facilities. And we will come back with you after you give us a recommendation with a second resolution for a parking fee.
Okay.
Permit fee.
So first thing we have to do is introduce the ordinance change.
I can do that in a reading?
Yep.
Okay, I move that the reading in full of the body of ordinance number four four five dash two oh one eight be waived, said ordinance be introduced for first reading by title only.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Okay, that moves us on to the resolution, and that's the following page, and we want to...
We have to read it.
Oh, you have to read it. Excuse me, I'm just jumping. All that conversation has me baffled.
So then I move that the ordinance number four four five dash, two oh one eight, an ordinance in the city of Weed amending chapter fourteen point sixteen of the Weed Municipal Code, municipal parking facilities by adding one four point one six dash oh oh two two parking permits with the discussions that just happened added to that information. I just moved that.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed. Unanimous, okay. Now I'm ready for the resolution. I apologize, folks.
Sue, would you like to do this?
Yeah. I move that the reading in full of the body of resolution number zero three dash two zero one eight be waived, said resolution being introduced and adopted by title only.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed.
I move adoption of resolution number zero three dash two zero one eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Weed amending traffic resolution number six five dash seven four, establishing certain parking regulations throughout the city at section two three point four two municipal parking facilities affecting city parking lots and other municipal parking facilities.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
None. Okay. I got two resolutions in my packet. We'll pass them both. Okay, that moves on. I would like to take a moment to address a person in the county. Ray, do you have a member from?
No, he was not able to make it, but I do have some remarks.
Then you can wait, then. Okay, all right, gotcha.
This is a different resolution.
Okay, yeah, you're right, thank you. Okay, on to item B, parking and...
So we just did.
We did parking permits. Junction well site, resolution number zero four dash two zero one eight. Council will consider moving forward with the development of a well site for an alternative water supply.
If you remember when we negotiated a water lease with Roseburg Forest Products, we requested and obtained cooperation by Roseburg in assisting the city to develop new water resources. One of the things we requested was the opportunity to do a test well and conduct a hydrological study to determine whether a site, which we refer to as the junction site, was a reasonable location for new city well. They granted that to us and told us that if we conducted that study and told them that we'd like to move forward to develop that well, if we did so within a certain time limitation, they would grant, for no consideration, all of the easements necessary for access, for an access road, for pipes to be run from the well to our city system, and for the above-ground facilities necessary to protect the well. The time limit that we were able to negotiate was a two-year time limit from the date we entered into the agreement. If you remember, they wanted a shorter time period, and I told them it was unreasonable to do a shorter time period. It took us eighteen months to get the planning study, the planning grant study approved by the state. Last fall, in October, we drilled the test well, and the hydrologic study, the pump study over a twenty-four-hour time period was completed this spring. In your packet, our materials from our consultant, which says that it's reasonable to develop a well at that site. Everyone should know that this is not an alternative to Bahan Springs. This is simply to add additional resources to the city system. If you read the email from Bonnie Lampley, who represents the hydrologic firm, Lawrence and Associates, she says that we could anticipate a three hundred and fifty gallon per minute production. To convert that to CFS, so that you understand it is not a replacement for Bahan Springs, three hundred and fifty gallons per minute over three hundred and sixty-five days would only equal a zero point seven CFS. It simply adds to our resources. It doesn't replace it. But I do not want to lose Roseburg's agreement to give at no cost the well production site, the easements necessary to develop it. The agreement was approved on April fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. So the two-year time period is April thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And therefore, even though we don't have the final hydrologic report, we only have the preliminary data from the twenty-four-hour test, I'm asking that you move forward, adopt the resolution, and authorize me to send a letter so that I lock in place their agreement to provide us with those easements. Now, I should give you some idea about timeline. Complete all of the logical testing that we have funding for from the state. We have to complete Sequo analysis before we could begin the project. We'd have to complete engineering and design. We'd have to do surveying in order to survey the route for both the road and for the easements for the pipes. Then we'd have to go out to bid and construct. And somewhere within there, we have to finance. The last well we drilled cost a million and a half. So we're not going to, we're not going to drill the well until we have sufficient grant funds to be able to do so. So the earliest possible time that that well could be online would be twenty twenty-two, four years from now, and realistically is probably five years from now. So your action doesn't solve an immediate problem, but it begins to enhance our system so that we can handle. so that we can handle the needs of our community as it grows.
Mayor, I have a first question. So by that activity, doesn't that negate our agreement with Rosenberg that we didn't find an alternate source within our time period that, that was suggested? Isn't that against us if we do that?
Since we did not get the grant, and Rosenberg will not extend the time period on that particular provision, any of the other options are basically foreclosed unless Rosenberg grants us an agreement. This agreement will no longer automatically grant us agreement to develop other water sources.
Because this isn't developing another source, this, another source is not, is not attached to the Bahan Springs, right?
It is not.
So it's a whole different situation, and I'm thinking business-wise, they will say, whoops, you missed it, we got you.
I fully expect them to say that we missed the two years for any other option, yes.
So what position does that put us in as a city?
It enhances your ability to take by eminent domain because they leave you with no other choice.
This just...
But you, you're making the assumption that they actually own Bahan Springs.
No, no.
I am not making that assumption.
I'm making the assumption of what, what states we're in based on what Councilmen Hall mentioned, that some information is going on that still might provide not a loophole, but an avenue to support our ownership of the water. So looking at that, I'm saying, what would this activity do to negate that or enhance that? I'm always looking at that because I grew up here from three years old.
The reason I asked the water attorney to write it was to, to make sure as best I could as your city manager that I, that you did not take an action that would result in foreclosing legal options to you.
Or enhancing them for Rosenberg's purposes, right?
Yeah, so he has done his best. Whether he has actually accomplished what you just asked, maybe for some court to decide someday.
I hate that sentence. But, but, but that's real, but I, but I heard that in, in your deliberation.
But, but all, all along, we have approached our water, water fairly methodically. I mean, as far as we're taking action so we can look at another action so we can follow that with another action. Nothing has technically gone off the table yet. So we still have eminent domain proceedings going, we have ownership proceedings going, and we still have some lease things, but that's kind of, to me, it's inconsequential at some point, but... And then, and then we still have this system which adds to our increase in water supply anyway, which we will need probably for growth at any point in time.
I'm just looking at us, as the community as I've asked, what have you done since signing that agreement to finding other water sources? And that specific, so this is the first piece that I've heard that's in, after two years, that we're finally doing something. And that question's been asked by the public, right?
Well...
So I, so I think it's a good activity, I'm not denouncing it. I'm saying thank you, I'm saying thank you.
The agreement was approved on April fourteenth. We filed a request for a planning study with the state of California by July.
Of two thousand sixteen.
Of two thousand sixteen.
Right.
You received the grant in September of two thousand seventeen, and we drilled the well in October of two thousand and seventeen. So as far as the staff's response to timelines, we were very responsive. Within two months, we had the grant application in, within thirty days, we had the test well being drilled. But the state of California is not all that quick on getting grant dollars out to us in order to address the issues.
Which is all my question about grants, right, always.
Well, we're, we're a disadvantaged community. And, and we can't be charging four hundred dollars a month for water for our citizens in order to be able to fund these sort of things. We have a hundred thousand, we have one thousand customers. To come up with the seven hundred thousand dollar planning money that needed to be done, we would have had to ask every customer to give us seven hundred dollars.
Right, and nine dollars is already, and I...
Stressing as well.
And, and, and so, within the realm of responsibility, we can't ask our citizens for those sort of funds. Even though we need to take the action, we need to go through the process to get grant dollars so that we're not burdening the taxpayer or the citizen of our community.
I'm a hundred percent with you, I'm just with our timing going so that we don't affect anything that Rosenberg might want to do. Don't give any type of thought process, no window, no loophole, no nothing, I'm always there.
And Rosenberg has only offered this particular site for us to drill on anyway.
Yes.
Any other site would be on somebody else's property.
We'll see.
So, if we have to go that route, but this at least secures this.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on regarding that, of our statement. Actually, I, I, I think that everybody understands, I really see Rosenberg as a hostile entity right now when it comes to water. So I think Mr. Green's comment regarding being, making sure that we've got all of our i's dotted and t's crossed, and it sounds like we have. My, my question is, if we, if we continue this, are we, and, and the court finds that the water is ours, and we have, so we have the two point oh, and will we, and will we still have the right to this, this water with our Bahan Springs two point oh cubic feet per second to the city of Weed?
I believe that we do. The... The city did a master plan for its water service in two thousand and three, and that master plan suggested that you develop additional resources as the city grew. And this is certainly a viable option. We've added an extra well in two thousand and fifteen on the south side, and adding an extra well in whenever we can get it drilled, let's say twenty twenty or twenty twenty-two in the north side, is helping build the, the system so that it can meet the requirements of our citizens. Even if the court rules in our favor on Bahan Springs, we'll still go forward and drill this well. The quality of water is, is extremely good, reliability is extremely good, and we need to add resources to the north side. One of the housing projects that I've tried to get a nonprofit to work on would add housing on the north side. As we add housing on the north side, we need to have the supplies to service that housing.
Thanks.
Any comments from the audience?
Howdy, my name's Raymond Strack, I live at thirty, thirty-eight Nighthawk Lane. I have the privilege of being one of the Weed Nine folks who have tried to step up for the city's rights to the water, but I think it's very prudent for the council to look into alternative water sources, even if we all, you know, think positively in the event of a positive outcome in the Superior Court there, especially given that Rosenberg is giving, you know, easement considerations for, for nothing effectively, even if and when we win that court case, to have an extra point seven cubic foot per second for expansion of the city can't hurt. Thanks.
Thank you, Ray.
Do we have any, Mr. Mayor, do we have any costs with this next step is going to?
We do not have any costs in the next twelve-month time period. That will be the completion of the evaluation of all other options, determination that this is the best option for a new source, to enhance the system, and to complete Sequa. Once we get to the point of, of survey and design, there will be some costs. And if Rosenberg is, is helpful, there is the possibility of that occurring. If they're helpful in negotiating with us in regard to easements, if they're willing to sign off on an easement in the next twelve months, we might end up doing some surveying costs at our expense. But that would be the only expense in the next twelve months. Once we get to engineering, we're going to be applying for grants again. All the way through the process, it is our intention to get this online to meet our customers' needs without the city paying more than simply a local match for a construction project itself. And since if we retain our status as a disabled, or disadvantaged community, that should be zero of that full cost.
Now, you said you anticipated, that you fully anticipated that there would be some pushback regarding the time, timeframes?
On every other option.
On every other option.
The North Bull Stream option, the possibility of buying a, a well that's in existence that's beyond Rosenberg's property. There are other options out there that would entail easements on Rosenberg's property, and I would expect that for any other option that requires an easement on Rosenberg's property, they will tell us the two years has passed.
Okay.
Just this follow-up, I see the letter, not dated, but for confidentiality, from Stuart Gray to Rosenberg saying, he's from Rosenberg, saying that we are going to do something that we, we're intended to. If we change that intent, does this letter do something to our position?
No, it was carefully written so that it would not become a project under Sequa and be an automatic requirement that you actually go through with it. As you continue to do the hydrological study, as you continue to do the surveying, you may find that costs are prohibitive, you may find that there are other factors that cause you to stop. I'm trying to lock in Rosenberg, Stacy, I'm not trying to lock in you, okay?
I'm just scared of Rosenberg's possible response because they play the big man.
But remember, when you asked me these hypothetical questions in an open public meeting, I then get to court and get to watch myself perform in front of the city council as an exhibit by the other side
Right.
talking to the judge about what I said, so...
That's what I'm trying to...
Try not to lock me too much into the corner, okay?
I want to clarify, so the public sees it and we see it, I think that's important, that's the important match. So we see it, we understand it, and the public sees it, so there's no, no concern.
And, and my comments will be taken out of context, and they will use three sentences out of fifteen-minute presentation to say something else to the judge, which is exactly what happened earlier.
I have to ask that question, I have to ask.
Anyway. So any other questions from council?
No, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Anybody want to motion the resolution?
I can do it, since I'm out there.
Okay.
Okay, and get the right resolution number, and this is just for reading, is for read, and adoption?
Resolution, we read it, we adopt it.
Okay, where's my number at? Before, after, before Stuart Gray's mail, there we go, four, oh, four, two, oh, one, eight, that it?
Yep.
All right, I moved up the reading in full of the body of resolution number oh, four, dash, two, zero, one, eight. Be waived said resolution being induced it and adopted by title only.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I move that resolution number oh, four, dash, two, oh, one, eight. A resolution, resolution of the City Council of the City of Weed to develop a well at the junction well site.
I give a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Do you oppose? Okay, I oppose this. You oppose the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, on to item D, FEMA hazard mitigation grant availability.
Steve and I have been learning a great deal about FEMA grants since we wrote the agenda memorandum. So we're going to correct a couple of items. FEMA got back to us on our request as to whether or not we could fund a fire station with four, oh, four grant money. And they say in this round that they're not going to allow that. They're only looking for flood control and wildfire mitigation. So, um, we are asking you if you would permit us to put in a letter of intent that we would like to apply for two grants from them. One for flood control, which would be on Main Street, on Bull's Creek, and the other for wildfire mitigation, which would be in numerous locations around the community. We do have a grant pending for flood control from Sequa, and that is supposedly going to be awarded in March, but I don't know for certain that they're going to meet their deadlines, at times they have been late. So we're duplicating efforts, but it's only requiring a letter at this point. It would, both of the requests would be reviewed by FEMA, and if they determine that they were interested in funding one or both of them, they would then invite us to attend meetings with them, and they would tell us how to write the grant application. And the grant application will actually go in, in the summer. One item that we aired is that they, they did confirm that the four, oh, four grants do have a twenty-five percent local match. And so I wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with us moving forward on those two items because if we receive the grants, we would have to add some funding in next year's budget.
Is it, I, yeah, you know me, I have a question right off.
Go ahead.
So, number one, how, would the letter increase our, our ability to receive the grant, number one? And number two, what's the estimated match amount for twenty-five percent?
Uh, depends on what they will allow us to apply for the grant. The flood mitigation was engineered with preliminary engineering with six hundred thousand.
Is that total cost, I'm sorry, is that total cost, sir?
Yeah. Wildfire mitigation, it, it depends on how many trees you want to cut down. Uh, and, and last year, we had twenty thousand in. If we're going to apply for a grant, we're probably going to apply for something meaningful, so it'll probably be a significant number. Steve and I haven't talked about the dollar amount for that. We asked Darren to come up with a number, but he hasn't as of yet. You are not bound on a grant until you approve the grant agreement. So if they accept our letters and they invite us in and they work with us on developing the grant, they're going to basically tell us what our budget's going to be. When the grant is approved, it has to come back to the council, and you have to approve it in order for it to be binding on the city. And at that time, you're going to have to look at what the cost would be locally and where you're going to get your dollars.
And I'm thinking of, I was coming from a cost perspective, we don't make a lot of money, but I'm looking at the cost perspective based on what design we're looking at, what's possibly, what's necessary for the city of Weed to be effective for coverage, and how that matches what we have in our budget, or what we have to go out, I'm not saying to ask the public, but what may have to come from whatever area. That's always my concern about grants, and that's why I always speak to the grant piece.
And simply, it's a request. Once granted, we don't have to accept unless we approve of the conditions.
But planning would want us to know the amount so, so it's not spinning wheels of our chief and our, our administrator, our manager to know what's going to work for us, right?
I believe right now, Stacy, this is just write a letter that says
We want to apply for a grant.
We want to apply for a grant. They don't even need a dollar number on this. This, and then they'll just say, no, we don't want you, or yes, we do.
And that's my caution.
Well, if they say yes, then we move forward.
Move forward and do funding.
And that's when there'll be some numbers.
And then they still can say, no, if, if our number's too high.
Well, no, we're not going to give them a number this time, right now, does not have a number, right?
Yeah, after they can, yeah.
After the letter.
But this is just asking for permission to apply.
Yeah, he just wants to know if he can write a letter to ask.
I still need the numbers.
No, there's not the numbers yet.
You can't have numbers until they actually give us a number.
We have an estimate of what we want to build, people know that we're going to build a new firehouse.
Fire station's not the choice.
Fire station has been eliminated.
It's out, FEMA won't give you money for a fire station.
We're not going to go out there and get all those numbers if they won't even let us apply.
So, six hundred thousand's for the flood control project? Which we've seen in all our lifetime, then that little kid's, the little swimming pool that's right at the corner of the tire shop.
Okay. You'll miss that, is that what you're saying?
No, we're going to address that.
Yes, we do miss it, yeah.
I'm still looking for the fire station, we've said that that's on Roseburg property, I want to get out of there.
Okay, okay. Yeah, this is just so he can write a letter.
So, I'll make a motion that you can write a letter requesting to write.
However much money.
I'll second it. Come on, guys, okay.
To apply for, write the letter to request to apply for the grant.
Yes.
I second it. I do, I think we have to be read a little bit differently there, folks.
Does it?
Just saying, yeah, you're going to have to approve the resolution.
That's not a resolution.
Not a resolution.
Oh, okay, actually, excuse me, I missed number D, so I'm the stupid one right now, so, uh, let me put the hat on. I thought she did a good job. Okay, all right, go ahead, Kim, I'm sorry.
So, okay, so I'll start over, so I will move that Steve and Ron write the letter to apply for the grant, asking permission to enter application for the grant.
For funds for flood control primarily on Bull's Creek, as am, and, as amended to remove the construction of fire stations and to replace with fire mitigation, can we get a yea?
Yea.
I still second it.
Yep, and I still say yes.
All in favor, aye, I give up, okay. Uh, on to item D.
Opposed, you got, you didn't say opposed.
Oh, anybody opposed?
Opposed, based on what, what we discussed.
Okay, all righty, write that down, Sandy. Okay, on to item E, proposal to create a Weed Appellation Project Committee, council will review information on the formation of an appellation for cannabis grown in our area and give recommendations.
I do have, I have a little stall along with, here, I do have a little record, so I will be reading it off. Big words?
Thank you.
I'll be reading it.
Cossaurus.
I know. Did you not use big words?
These words are traditionally used, I did not pick these words, these are, these directly come from, from Franzen, from where this kind of concept comes from, well.
We may have to have you translate.
Honestly, one of my opening notes here is that city manager stock, as well as Mayor Palafini, do have more in-depth emails regarding this that include the agricultural commissioner, Commissioner Smith was not able to make it this evening, but I have met with him about this, as the Department of Agriculture is by default the department through which we have to get a lot of the actual data that goes into this criteria development, so he did say, say he could apologize for not making it, but is well aware of what his role and responsibilities are, and quite frankly, is in favor of the project, so he will be joining us on the actual committee meetings, Agricultural Commissioner Smith.
Where's he live?
He lives up in Wyegu, but he had to go to Tulley Lake today, so he wasn't getting back.
You know Jim Smith?
Jim Smith. He's the ag, he's the ag commissioner.
If you saw his picture, you'd recognize him.
Is he a county representative or state representative?
County, so I've actually spoken with the state representative about this, his name is Francis Bean, he works at the CDFAs, he and I had about an hour-long conversation last week after I received some questions from when y'all discussed this at one of your staff meetings, so I did reach out to him and was able to have a long conversation, and we now have a dialogue, and I did tell Commissioner Smith that we had spoken, and they, we would become the third active state in the group performing this function, the state-level meetings on this start as early as May or perhaps as June this year, and we will be, if, if, if the council is kind enough to formally start this committee, we would then be asked to present at that state meeting with the ag department. So, I just, let me go ahead and break this down really quickly, so, an appellation is a legally defined and protected geographic indication used to identify a particular origin, or a re, excuse me, origin of a particular agricultural product and/or its derivatives, it is most commonly associated with viticulture, with wine-growing regions, although they do occur for cheeses, olives, almonds, you know, basically anything that has an added value by stating where it's from. An appellation refers not only to the specific geographic region of origin, but also to the particular attribute of a given region's products. The crux of the concept is the terroir, which is a French word, meaning from whence from, referring to the set of all environmental factors that affect a crop's phenotype, including unique environmental contexts, farming practices, and a crop's specific growth habitat. Collectively, these contextual characteristics are said to have a character, terroir also embodies this character, it's a, it's a word that within French carries, you know, some intrinsic weight, I suppose would be the phrasing. Terroirs are globally identified for crops as diverse as grapes, coffee, chili peppers, hops, tomatoes, wheat, tea, and cannabis. The categorical breakdown of the criteria include, but are not limited to, climate, soil content, and topography, as well as localized varietals and cultivation standards. To that point, I have had a conversation with several local botanists, including Robert Menzies, who is very interested in this project and is looking forward to participating. Within the context of cannabis, specifically, the authority to designate this appellation lies in section fifty-three of Senate Bill ninety-four-two-B, specifically that the name of a California county, including any similar name that is likely to mislead, shall not be used in advertising and subsection B no later than January first, twenty-twenty-one, which is why, by the way, this is easily anticipated to be an eighteen-month to two-year process of formal meetings with minutes, we need to reach out to not only, obviously, the local Department of Agriculture, but to local colleges and agricultural schools who do, do, who do, do have studies in this. We are in the Shasta Basin here, basically from the north of Dunsmere up to Gazelle, out to the Eddies, and to the mountain is a historical region of origin for several different crops, the ag department has studies based on this that reign, date back to the eighteen hundreds. But, the Department of Food and Agriculture shall establish a process by which licensed cultivators may establish appellations of standards, practices, and varietals applicable to cannabis grown in a certain geographic area in California, not otherwise specified in subdivision A. Subdivision A, by the way, refers specifically to county of origin, that is by default a labeling standard, so Humboldt or Mendocino or Trinity County cannabis cannot, you, you know, if you're not there, you can't claim it's from there. The goal of this effort is to establish protections for products emanating from our town and region, with the benefit of creating a high-value, high-demand product, the tax revenues of which are shared with the community. The city and region stand to gain economically through the creation of this board and its inclusion in regional and state-level conversations regarding appellation designations for cannabis production. The criteria developed through this committee, in conjunction with our local Department of Agriculture and the CDFAs, ensure that cultivation performed under city-issued licenses adhere to the highest standards of practice. So, if you have any questions, but the jux, the, the, the gist of this whole thing is that, you know, if, if, if the city proceeds upon its current course and we are open to issuing permits under state guidelines, in an effort to mitigate potential charlatans, which I believe everyone on this board has thought of as far as the taking advantage of our name, the real way to approach that is not by saying no to something, but by creating affirmative standards by which that charlatanry could not happen, and I believe that this committee, by, by creating this committee and becoming a vocal part, and, and by the way, Mount Shasta, because they qualify for this, there is going to be a similar motion for Mount Shasta to create a city board, we would then join with them, this, this does become a regional, you know, a greater sort of north-state conversation, you know, the Scott Valley qualifies, these, these terroirs are historical and have been designated long before we've come along, we're basically adopting an already established set of agricultural practices for a given region based upon climate, soil content, and et cetera, so if there's any questions, be happy to take them.
Can you repeat all that, please?
I'd be happy to repeat it at the committee meeting.
I said all these big ones.
Sue, I think you know that that's very difficult for me.
So, so as a, so as a question for me, anyway.
Please, yes.
Right now, you mentioned this whole valley.
Yeah.
Okay, is that your intent, is to establish the whole valley, or are, is the intent to establish just a micro?
I believe the intent would be both, I think it would be twofold, so ju, the way that these work in wine is there's large ones, and then there's lots of smaller ones within that large one, I mean, you know, in, in historical agricultural regions, literally, one side of a hill versus the other side of the hill, grapes are better than your grapes, and that's where this really comes from, right, if you look at, you know, the traditional example, and the most profound example would be you can only buy champagne from the Champagne River Valley, they make a very similar product the next valley over, but due to the soil content and the number of days of sunlight a year and the wind that goes through that valley, they claim that their product is better, and they've managed to create an entire industry based upon that concept. We here in Siskiyou, and specifically in this valley, we actually have a better cannabis-producing climate than places like Humboldt and Mendocino, the reason that that is so deeply entrenched there is because you were able to get away with it under a lack of regulated structure, even longtime growers in those regions will acknowledge that we have better climate and topography and soil content for it, quite frankly.
Oh, it'll be like when someone says Humboldt, what you think, oh, it must be good, so when they say it's Siskiyou County.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if it's, if it's more palatable, you can think of it as Napa wine from Napa and Sonoma wine from Sonoma, but the idea is to, yeah, of course, I mean, the, viticulture, wine is the most commonly utilized appellation status designation, but it does exist in agricultural practices all over the place.
Although staff didn't make a recommendation about whether or not you wanted to form
a committee, we do have a recommendation on process, that if it's going to be a standing committee, that we should write a resolution that identifies the membership, the purpose, the appointment by the council, and make sure that, that they're properly notified and, and trained so that they follow the, the Brown Act, they're going to have to post their, their agendas, they're going to have to take minutes, they're going to have to follow all of the rules if they're a standing committee of the council.
So, if they become a standing committee of the council, that means?
Council appoints.
Council appoints, I agree with that, but, so how about staff participation?
Well, you can have ex officio members, if you want to identify staff members to participate, you don't have to make staff members voting members.
What about the notes, my major concern is if they're going to have a standing committee, is somebody from the city itself, staff, going to be there to take the notes?
Yeah, I'm going to have to have one of the deputy city clerks be in charge of, of posting the notices, doing the minutes, taking the notes, that sort of thing. Depending on when they have their meetings, I may be splitting that among staff so that I'm not asking one staff member to, to be here three nights a, a month, I may be splitting it up between others.
From your estimation, how many meetings a month, I, I mean initially, probably, like anything, you have to have a few, but.
Well, again, so when you're really looking at this as like an eighteen-month to two-year situation, and, and to the transparency issue, I did, again, in my conversation with Francis Bean at the CDFAs, he did recommend that we do have it as a standing committee, and that we, we do have not only participation from city staff, but standing members of it, the inclusion of the Department of Agriculture also serves to increase the transparency of the process, because they will be the entity providing a lot of the data that goes into the criteria development. I would say that between now and May or, and/or June, when the state begins their meetings, we should have an initial set of perhaps two to three meetings, at that point, you know, it, it's a rather elongated process that I'm quite frankly just learning about as I go along, but it's also, in addition to the standing set members that we would come and discuss week by week, we would have rotational presentations by different members of the ag department, by different, you know, think, staff from Chico State or from other large ag departments that would come in and describe the historical sort of criteria that we've used to develop this, you know, I, I don't want to overextend anyone's time considerations here, but I would say that we have, you know, two to three meetings between now and the start of the state-level meetings, and then as we see what the state-level meeting schedule is, mirror that, you know, so I don't know if at the point that you adopted a resolution next month, you would have to have a set schedule, or whether that schedule can be manipulated?
Well, the Brown Act requires that you post the, the agenda, I think it's three days in advance, so.
But it's not like we'd be locking ourselves into X amount of meetings per month, like we've, I believe, what the state has said is there's going to be a round of meetings in either late May slash early June, because they're just starting this as well, right, the, historically, the California Wine Board is actually in charge of this, and the initial rule set issued by the state, the California Wine Board was involved in the conversation, they have since excused themselves from the conversation, and the CDFAs is building its own project team, Francis Bean is, is the supervisor of which, so, like I said, we would be the third committee of this nature in the state, the other two were, were formed actually two years ago, prior, way prior to even the adoption of SB ninety-four through the AUMA.
Where are the other two?
The other two are in Mendocino and Humboldt, Trinity has one, but it's not, it's shocking, I know.
That's a dumb question.
Well, no, there's no such thing as a dumb question, I mean, it could have been Humboldt and Trinity, you know, I.
I have a question, based on.
Yes.
Regulations with, oh my gosh, cannabis industry supporting that, with existing laws being, being, probably going to change, just my federal thinking.
Sure.
Is this going to be in concert with that, as far as looking at recreation and all commercial, or just, as the whole, I'm saying, is this something created that's going to be able to look at those current issues and the future issues that will be intact?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we don't, so we don't see something that comes up, boom, we're hitting the back of the head with something.
No, and far from it, I mean, this is really a, sort of an academic exercise, right, this doesn't actually have anything to do with the potential operations of a cannabis business, other than by implementing said standards, those businesses would be able to utilize the geographic region of origin name, I, I think if, what you're alluding, alluding to is changes in, in federal dialogue or federal law regarding cannabis.
Or state.
Or, or state, well, for state, absolutely, because like I said, it's an eighteen-month, two-year process that's going to be done in conjunction with the CDFAs, but I guess more to the point is that this is almost a slightly academic exercise, and has, other than packaging and labeling requirements, has very little to do with the actual business proceedings of most cannabis businesses.
I'm saying that because we have existing onboard now entities that are looking at packaging and manufacturing that are in our area.
Yeah, and the idea would be, upon the adoption of a more formal ordinance regarding the CUP process with cannabis businesses, what you would, what we've been recommended to do, quite frankly, by the CDFAs, is to then include a byline, something along the order of any cultivation pa, because the packaging and labeling, those procedurals and standards are set by the state, the inclusion of our potential appellation designation would fall under that rule set, but the business practices performed under cultivation licenses issued by the city would have to meet the standards and practices set forth by the appellation committee, so it would be something on the order of, the city is open to, through the conditional use permitting process, issuance of permits under a state SB ninety-four, line number two, any cultivation operating under said city licenses would have to defer to the standards of practice set forth by the appellation committee, which is again, how you sort of mitigate potential bad actors coming in trying to capitalize, for instance.
So, we need, need to find, we do need to place it in the, the cultivation ordinance, that's, you already know that, right?
I mean, we've discussed this a little bit, yes, absolutely, this would definitely be something that is referenced, not only in the cultivation ordinance, but in any cannabis production ordinance, including manufacturing, because it does also refer to the biomass product as well as its derivatives.
That's why. Mr. Mayor?
That's why I want it.
Good, so, in simple terms, what we're doing is creating the, the, how the community is going to, if they, if it is possible, how the community's going to profit or prosper from their name.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is, as I, as I allude to here, I mean, Napa and Sonoma's coffers are heavily funded by the fact.
So, as we go into the, so we, as we, we form this committee, so what we're going to be doing, we, at that time, we'd be deciding, well, what, who would be able to use our name?
That is absolutely correct.
We're not going to, say, right now, you're talking about a valley, the entire valley, I don't, I, I think.
We have to.
Those things would be worked out with, in the committee level, is that what you're?
Yes, we have to identify the larger geographic region of origin as the valley using, using the mountains, quite frankly, right, and where the topography changes from the valley to the high desert, but more to your point, yes, this is so that we can, we can set standards so that anyone trying to use the region or town's name would have to abide by a very high set of practice standards, so that we know that they, just like if you wanted to grow Napa wine in Napa or Sonoma wine in Sonoma, if you were to open a vineyard there, you receive a binder, like, you know, yea thick, with a set of series of practices that make sure the grapes that you grow are good enough to claim that name, and that's what we're doing here.
Because they don't want your product to be something that damages their value.
Absolutely correct, yes, that's the, you know, again, we're, we're kind of creating a, a high-value product, and the referential dollar point of that product on the open market, obviously, you know, that speaks to the profitability of businesses in the area and region, and that goes to the city's tax coffers. There are some structuring, and I, this is a bit beyond my scope, and I have been doing some research, I'm going to contact this gentleman, Robert Mendelson is sort of the preeminent California scholar on wine terroirs and the applications and criteria for those, I, I did reach. I did reach out to his office, I did not hear back. As to whether or not the city can formally have some sort of, you know, profit sharing, for lack of a better word, it seems that there is some case law that would allow that. So there is definitely a situation where the town would stand to substantially benefit economically from this, not only by virtue of just the taxation, which obviously we have the vote coming up in June, but as the sort of fostering entity to allow us, this committee, to give the credence and validity to the work that the committee does in identifying these criteria in conjunction with our bureaucratic organizations.
So we're basically controlling the consistency?
Yeah.
And the reputation of the name, just like when we see our crystal guise of water, and we know that it's the same no matter where you bought it.
That is absolutely correct, yeah. You're basically setting a series of industrial standards, or, you know, standards of practice, because it is, the standards of practice are specific to the actual cultivation, so think soil content, so the discussion at the state level right now is that you would have to show 35% of your soil content by volume is actually sourced from the geographic region of origin, which is why it can't be as small as the town's name, we don't have that sort of thing here. So the geographic region of origin, theoretically, we want to expand it to include, you know, some pumice quarries and things like that, that we can actually use in the soil, volcanic rock dust, glacial rock dust, you know, local mushroom compost, these things that we have in our region, in our community, are the actual physical inputs that would go into something like the soil content measure that the Appalachian Committee would develop.
So you're talking that you could technically create the soil?
Yeah.
To mimic what is naturally occurring?
Yeah, you want to, yeah, I mean, just as farmers of old did, you didn't necessarily plant what you had there, you went and, you know, you got a bunch of amendments and dumped it on top of your field and plowed it in.
Gotcha.
Pilled it in.
And you're going to the Mount Shasta City Council to ask them?
I may not do that personally, there are some permit holders in Mount Shasta who I know as fellow colleagues and in the cannabis industry who may take this, I would probably offer my advice and services at that point, but I, you know, I may not be making this formal presentation of this.
So would it not be a combined committee? Or not necessarily...
It potentially could be, but as it stands right now, there does not seem to be as much support for it in Mount Shasta.
Because they don't need to protect their name?
Not only that, there's, they, I mean, I'd hate to, you know, not to my own, they don't have someone like me who's like actually doing a lot of the groundwork and researching this and talking to the CDFA. The operators that have obtained permitting down there are far more focused on building their operations than some of the bureaucratic logistics of things like this.
So we would need to, number one, kind of give the staff direction to create the committee, and how that committee would look, and I'm not sure if it would be council sitting on that committee, or possibly planning commission sitting on that committee.
You might have one of each, but the one thing that I would ask is, if he wants to get going as fast as he does, if we're going to do a resolution by April, we probably should be advertising so that anyone that has an interest in serving on the committee could submit a letter of interest to you, so that in April, you might actually be able to pick some of the members that would be serving. There's going to be a steep information climb from April to May.
Is that big of a rush on the deadline? The deadline is when, May?
I mean, I don't want that to appear as a deadline, I just, I was informed that the, again, because the state has between now and January 1st, 2021, they also do have another benchmark that they have to at least have started the meetings and the dialogue by January 1st, 2019. So the idea is to meet, I believe, every two to three months between, I was told, again, the end of May or early June would be the first set of state meetings on this, and there would be several meetings before January 1st, 2019, and then there would be, you know, at that point, they'd set a formalized schedule of meetings for the following two years.
So how about an exact projected date that we need to have a committee? Do you have that?
No, that's up to y'all. I mean, like, I would say to echo Ron's sentiment, as soon as possible would be move us, because it is a steep information climb. Also, to formally start it, does allow us a bit more access to staff of Department of Ag, who, like I said, are already very much aware of what their responsibilities are and are on board with this, but, you know, digging through historical records in the Department of Agriculture is literally the work we're talking about. We're talking about going back through and identifying historical designations of points of origin for different crops, and then identifying the sets of criteria that the state's going to be asking us to present at their meetings.
And I heard a lecture from Mr. Menzey, and there are things that grow in South Siskiyou County that do not grow anywhere else in the world.
They grow.
Except for Ireland. Was it Scotland or Ireland, was the other place? There's a tree, yeah, that is here and in Scotland.
Unfortunately, due to his health, Robert was not able to make it this evening. He is a neighbor of mine, and we've known each other for a while now, and he is extremely excited that this is, that this is potentially happening, and definitely looks forward to him putting his vast trove of knowledge to work on this.
Okay, so I think, just for tonight, we definitely need to give staff direction...
Public comment.
Actually, we do need public comments. Anybody out there besides Ray that wants to talk? Besides Jimmy?
Yeah, Jimmy, get up there, buddy.
Jim Spiegel, 2601 North Old Stage Road. A couple of questions. For one, is the Appalachian going to be strictly branded as Siskiyou? Or, because you said counties, or can you use weed also? And if you do use weed in the Appalachian process, will that keep other companies or areas from calling their product weed?
So, two points there.
Good question.
One, yes, the county, the county of origin designation is already set, that, and your product can only state the county that it came out of. Second question, as far as the use of the town's name, it would not stop other people from using the colloquial nomenclature weed to refer to cannabis, what it would stop them from doing, that being said, on a state level, it's all cannabis, that's the only word we utilize, and quite frankly, on a professional level, that's the only word I would like to hear utilized, that's what it is, that's its actual scientific name. So, you know, no, we can't stop people from calling cannabis weed, we can stop them from implying on any sort of labeling that their cannabis came from weed.
And also, it struck me as kind of odd that we're saying, well, we've got the special soil types, since in the city of weed is only allowing cultivation in warehouses, and also, if you're growing outside of the city limits, you can't grow commercially right now, I understand, so having the soil thing is kind of a strange concept to me, but I still hope that we can get a percentage of the word weed across the state. But it's a, but from the area, I think we can, it's a good commercial idea, it's great.
So, to answer, to answer your question, first of all, I think, I actually had the opportunity to meet with Supervisor Nixon, and do have a meeting coming up with Supervisor Chris as well. There will be another county ad hoc committee on this issue sometime in the next coming months, so this is something that's going to be revisited at the county level. First of all, as far as Jimmy's assertion that we're only going to be growing in warehouses, I believe right now, what we've discussed is a situation where there would be no outdoor cultivation, that is to say, fully sunlit, but there would ostensibly be greenhouse, closed wall greenhouse facilities with light deprivation. But, that being said, regardless of how it's grown, you still have to grow the plant in soil, the only thing that would be excluded from this would be aquaponic growing, which the very nature of which doesn't allow for this sort of a classification, because you have complete control as opposed to allowing nature to do its thing on some level. So the soil content just happens to be one of the main historical criteria, and obviously one of the most important as far as the quality of product cultivated. I don't know if that answered your question, Jimmy?
Okay.
So, oh, I guess the second point on that is that if and when there were other jurisdictions that allowed permitting, and to be frank, Montague City Council and Wyegu City Council are both looking at this, as are, with any luck, if the folks over there who requested some, I've been providing documentation to some local activists over in the Scott Valley as well, these same sorts of sets of criteria could be utilized on a larger level, so, and this goes to Bob's question as to, you know, how big or how small, if you were to look at certain wine-growing valleys, they literally go from one-third of the county to one set of land, and then, you know, there's like three or four levels, like the little Russian dolls that keep bouncing out, you know, they keep getting smaller and smaller, and so that's what we'd be looking at. We'd be looking at a situation where it was grown in Siskiyou, in this particular basin, in weed, and thereon and so forth, so you would have similar designations, that you're all in the same macro group, but your micro is smaller.
So you could have Bold Creek weed, or you could have...
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. That's, I mean, if you really look at historical examples, these things were really from one valley to the other, because, you know, the farmers would say, mine are better than yours, prove it, you know, and the proof's in the pudding.
Okay, so do you need a motion for us to create the committee?
Hold on one second, we have Holly that wants to speak.
211 Pine Street, 334 East Lake. I know this is just an academic proposal that you guys are all considering here, however, Stacy, talking to Councilmember Green, he likes to talk about dollars and cents, so I'm guessing that the law enforcement, or the, who would, I know you can't answer this right now, but one of the questions would be, who's going to police it if someone is a bad actor, so to speak? And how, where does that budget come from? Chief Nicholas's budget, the city of weed, county sheriff, Lopez Department, I don't know. So, and also health and safety, as I've been accused of my offense being a health and safety hazard, you know, what if there's meth in somebody, something's project, product that they promote, and so, again, going back to the health and well-being of our community, of course, right now, it is a Schedule I health and whatever thing, and it's not very popular with the city council, I know to say that, but there is a money issue, and I will just leave it at that, to do with the youth. Two 27-year-olds I know right now are in jail, who went to school with my son, because they started out with cannabis, and they went from there to meth. So let's hope that we have sanity here, and we don't make a huge mistake in being all cool. Thank you.
I can just speak to at least one of Holly's points. The Department of Agriculture, in conjunction with the CDFA, does have an enforcement budget for Appalachian standard, but it's also an industrial thing, so like I was alluding to earlier, the California Wine Board is in charge of ensuring that those standards and practices are met. In addition, just to once again highlight, there are incredibly stringent health and safety standards that are associated with the recreational and medicinal cultivation of cannabis as per state SB 94, including an up to track and trace, which mandates all product to have barcodes that have all inputs during the plant's life cycle, as well as controls on how it's distributed.
He said that the California Wine Board jumped off of this thing, so I don't know how that applies, but thank you.
Okay, so we'll have no more debates, stay. Anybody else from the audience want to make a comment? Because we're interested in new comments. All right.
I'll go real quick, Ken.
Too late.
Elizabeth, 242 Main Street. No, I've actually been watching this kind of come along the last couple of years, and be clear, it's not that, it's not in the realm of wanting to defile the city of weed's name, or the play on it or anything, it's actually would be kind of an honor, since there is only three other jurisdictions in California, that we say, you know, out of Siskiyou County, done here, setting that bar and standard on the production, the way we're regulated. I understand Holly's concerns, but we are so regulated that it's like not even funny right now, we can't squeak. The testing that goes into this, after, you know, the whole production and everything even began, if anything doesn't meet standards anyway, it's discarded, it can't even be out to the public. So, that again brings me back to prior conversations. I think some night, I don't know whether it's at a board meeting, or maybe we should have, need to have a cannabis education tonight, somehow, on the new laws, the new restrictions, how we're regulated, so people in our community can understand really what goes on. It's just a suggestion.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So how is the, any more comments? Okay, we're going to shut her down for comments. Counsel, do we want to push the staff forward on writing up some language for a standing committee?
Yes, it's my vote, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we authorize staff to prepare a resolution creating a weed Appalachian Project Committee as a standing committee in the city of weed.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On to item F. Item F is, there is no action being requested on item F, it is just merely a discussion regarding the future sale of adult use at medical dispensaries. Adult use is recreational use, okay? Consideration of direction to staff regarding regulations.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question on this?
Well, certainly.
The question is, what, since, this is going to open up a whole big thing, so is there a format at, I'm trying to think what I'm saying, is there an area of discussion that we're looking for for this? Because this opens up everything, what I've been hearing for the last weeks, on dispensaries. Is there, is there a point that we're looking at, or just discussion?
We're looking at a discussion, and it's going to lead somewhere, or not, but the discussion is based upon recreational or adult use that is, that is going on in other communities. I think one of the reasons that it's being brought forward is that we have, we didn't have great timing, because we got a kind of, personally speaking, because we got hung up on a lot of little things as we went along, and all of this should have been probably up and running four months ago, or five months ago, if we would have just let things happen. However, since that didn't, we have now businesses that we have said, yes, welcome, come on in, and by not, and since recreational just came into play and permits were issued, now we have looked at welcoming to businesses, and in my personal opinion, we have asked them to fail.
So can we have a time limit on what we discussed tonight, so it doesn't go well past midnight?
Well, three minutes from the audience, and I'll hold you guys to it, and please...
Can I say something from the staff level that might limit this a bit? What we have been seeing in other communities, like Shasta Lake, and Viejo, and others, is that they have allowed those medical dispensaries that have been in operation to expand to allow them to also sell adult sales. We received an email from Jimmy, and he said, why can't the city do this? Well, Viejo has had some financial problems, and so they might have been able to identify a financial reason why they had an emergency. I asked the city attorney, do we qualify for an emergency ordinance? He said, no. He could not see any reason for an emergency ordinance. So Jimmy, the answer to your question is, we do not have the legal right to do that. The second question was, if the council wanted to allow, the, we actually have only one dispensary in operation at the moment, and they have told us that they're turning away customers, and they have told us that that's a little bit awkward for them, because they tend to have a facility both here and in Mount Shasta, and what she does is, she simply tells them to go to her facility in Mount Shasta, which kind of doesn't make any sense to her customers that they have to do that. So she asked you, could I add that additional option? And so the question to you tonight is not everything related to cannabis, the question is, do you want to follow the lead that some of the others have? Are you comfortable enough with the operations that have been operated? Are you comfortable enough with the operations that have been operated? So that you're willing to say those who currently have a valid medical dispensary license would be authorized by a new ordinance, that would have to be drafted, have to get first reading in April, it'd have to get second reading in May, it wouldn't be effective until June, allowing for the dispensary to sell recreational products, under the limits that the state allows.
So, it has to be its own ordinance, it can't be a resolution to our other ordinance?
No, Bob said it has to be an ordinance.
Bob, quit twisting your, that, the noise from that pen is like nails on a chalkboard. You, you can't hear it, apparently. We're all going.
I kept thinking it was me breathing hard or something, I kept looking, and I'm going, what is it? So, so my, one of my, one of my questions is, if we're asking a business to fail, that does not constitute some kind of emergency where we could push that? Devil's advocate.
That's not a municipal emergency. That's, that's not, that is not a municipal emergency. It's, it may be an emergency of that business, but that's not what the statute speaks to.
Okay, so the whole reason that we even moved forward in any of the cannabis industry was for income for the city. And if we're turning people away, we're losing the whole reason we did this to begin with. I mean, ideally, we wanted to be able to do recreational for a year, and watch how it turned out, and then decide, or, I'm sorry, medical, and decide, but that took us a lot longer than we anticipated. So, we used up that year time that we wanted to be watching, just working out all the details, and now recreational is allowable, and we're not moving forward.
Right, because it's voted on by the people.
Yeah.
And effective January first, that's the first.
Well, you remember that the first draft of the ordinance that I submitted to y'all had a provision in it that said, when recreational became legal, the medicinals could add that, and restrict that. So, we lost the opportunity to have that option. We have to change the ordinance if we're going to add adult use to the permissive use.
Okay.
Well, one, one point, didn't, hasn't the council in the last few meetings brought up a financial emergency on other subjects? There's, there's been, I don't know if it's, what, what the items were in front of the council, but I, I have heard that phrase bandied about here.
Taxation issue.
Financial emergency, financial emergency, use the same logic and the same reasoning to, to call this an emergency. It's, and it's not just the money that Elizabeth's losing. When these people come to town, they say, oh, we can't buy it here, we're going to go to Mount Shasta. If they bought it here, they would go to the Pizza Factory and get a pizza, they would go to Ray's and get some Doritos, they would go to Ellie's and get some pastries. They might stay, say, hey, let's get a room at the High Low, or let's get a room at the Townhouse, and stay here for a few days, and, and go hiking, and biking, and everything else. Once we get them off the freeway, that's the half of the battle that we want to win. And having the recreational available, and that, that fact beyond Weed Maps, the, the website, is, is the open door. And as much money, and as she's spent, the employees she's hired, the, the time she's spent, it seems like the, only the right thing to do. And also, there's one other item, every month that goes by where you don't have recreational available in town for local residents, some of them are going to be tempted to buy their recreational from local drug dealers. Those drug dealers are getting their cannabis from illegal grows. We don't know the strength of their grow, of their product, we don't know if it's adulterated with fungicides, herbicides, pesticides. When you pay the extra tax, which hopefully the voters will vote for in June, if that's the route we're going, doing this tonight would give her an extra two months to cultivate and build up her local clientele, which will then all be paying a tax come, the tax time in June, or July, whenever that would take effect. But the fact that you, people are going to be buying their pot from drug dealers, those drug dealers also have an incentive to sell them something stronger, sell them illegal pills, opioids, heroin, cranks. So, let's get the cannabis market where it's regulated from seed to sale, and, and we can keep an eye on it, and this will also help get some of the, the illegal growers, and some of the cartel grows, and start pushing that out of Siskiyou County, which I know we all want. That's all, thanks.
Thanks, Jimmy. So, on the introduction of an ordinance, do we have to have, does it have to be at a regular meeting, or that can be at a special meeting?
The adoption has to be at a regular meeting, but the introduction can be a special meeting.
Adoption could, so, does it have to have a thirty-day window?
It has to be at least five days.
Okay.
So, we could actually have a special meeting, introduce the ordinance, and then bring it to the April meeting for adoption.
Right, for example, you have a meeting on the twelfth, I guess it is, right, April twelfth, you could have an introduction on the, on the fifth, a week before that.
I would encourage that. Well, that's, that's an option on the table. Holly, you have something?
Yes, Holly, two eleven Pine Street, three, three, four, Eastlake. Just to mention that I happen to know several long-term pot users who, for their medical reasons, grow their own stuff, and they're very, they don't just buy them from the streets, and they have plenty that they give their friends. But in any event, as I might mention to you, that whatever happens in June, the city's not going to benefit one iota, an individual and their individual business will, as far as if you guys are interested in joining in, in the drug, whatever it's called, you know, tax, June, the voters will vote, and the city won't profit until June. So, you're talking about April, but there's May and June. So, just as a reminder that, you know, different people can say, oh, you know, the city has to do this, city has to do that. I don't know, I think that this is all rather tragic, and I'll probably get eggs at my face, or someone might force me to tear down my fence because I say that. But this is very tragic.
Do you have, Holly, do you have a point to, to what we're talking about as far as...
Well, what I'm saying is, as people giggle with the pot, is that Mr. Whatever Jimmy is not necessarily accurate to say that if people don't buy from the local business here, they're going to buy tainted, illegal stuff from drunk cartels off the street. Many people who use pot have been growing themselves for many years, and they have their own stashes, we don't have to worry about that. One, two, in June, whatever's on the ballot, as I saw on the door, the city's doing a special election to try to have a ten percent tax on this lady's business, or whoever's business. And I don't think the example that, oh, we have to quickly do this, because the whole reason that we did it is, is Councilmember Kim Green said, is so that the city can join in on the profit from the drug, whatever you call it, you know, that industry, tragic. All right, thank you.
Cannabis.
Okay, and in answer to Holly's question, there is sales tax collected on the sales.
Currently.
Sales.
Yes.
Correct.
I have one comment.
Comments to add?
I have one comment, I'll make it very brief. If you were to do a special meeting in regards to a proposed ordinance for adult use, I would only ask that you perhaps attach the appellation committee creation to it, in the interest of efficacy.
Yeah, that might be good, if we have, concerning the time element regarding creating an ordinance, I think is, we're taxing staff.
Mr. Mayor, the reason I asked for the time, because in this entire process, this is my second term, ending November, I might rerun, we see, but there's been discussion for and against, and I mentioned to people out in the public that you may want something, but if it's voted against, like the state voted of, we should support it, because that's what our constitutions are saying. So, I still look at that premise by, by what people are voting for, asking for, you may be against it, but the majority says it, you just have to work with it. And I know how, how that, how that might constrain in your mind, because I'm from one that always likes to be the one on the winning side. I haven't been, yet I've been able to adjust my life to be able to work with that. I think we need to look at that as a community, regardless of where, where you sit, if you're for or against it, I just want people to just remember that. Majority, we're a democracy, that's our current status of ruling here, and the state voted on for recreation to be available for everyone, so we need, we need to remember that.
The state did, and our local area also did.
Our city said no.
Right.
Our city did.
Our city at one point said, no, yes, but that was in two thousand and ten, I think. We have somebody? Marilyn, hi.
Marilyn Blankenship, North Davis. As I recall, the reason we changed the, the ordinance in the first place, Ron also reminded the council that we spent money on a special advisory, and it was advisory, but there was a bigger margin in the people who wanted, who didn't want the recreational. And so, we went ahead and did the, the medical, anyway, and, and the business here in town, she's a good businesswoman, she knew she was going to make it, even though it didn't include the recreational. And Stacy posted something on his Facebook, and it was an opinion, but I looked up where the guy had gotten some of his comments, and it, it has shown that in Colorado, in the, by the National Survey on Drug Use and Health Among Teens, that since they legalized it, it's just like alcohol, you make it more readily available, whether or not there's, people under twenty-one can't buy it, it has gone way up in our teens and our children, and they, they went from eighth grade up. So, the people locally here, in Weed, voted against it, and we have the dispensaries, and I just think there's a lot of people in our community that don't want it. So, thank you.
And just, just to let you know, the, the vote was against medical dispensaries. It had nothing to do with recreational. Recreational at that time...
There were two, it said recreational and dispensaries.
No, one was dispensary, what was the other?
It was recreational.
Cultivation.
One was cultivation, one was medical. Recreational really wasn't on the radar at the time, just, just as a point of correction, but I mean...
And also point of correction, you know, my vote, I was the only one that voted for it, and I was, I was voted against it by my colleagues, yet I had to run with the majority of what my colleagues said, which goes back to my point where I just stated initially.
I know, and I know, but I'm just want you to know that there's people who are concerned about our community, and don't feel like it's necessary.
And, and they have the public arena to, to vote, but yet our state as a whole, including this area, voted for recreation medical to be...
Is it federally okay?
It's not federally, anyway, and so that might change, it won't change it, because once they see the money they can make, and they distribute laws like they did for liquor, they'll be on the band, that become quickly, just like they did for liquor. Watch.
There, there is twenty-eight states already that allow medical. So, anyway, more people, okay?
Because some of the community members are here, the state requires that I have on-staff security. I have obtained my license from the BSIS, I forwarded it to Ron and to Chief Nichols. This is George Salis, you will see his face from morning till evening at our location, wearing his badge in our chosen uniform. He is licensed and has all of his permits through the BSIS, through the state. I'll be forwarding that to you, Martin. So, he's actually went to college, the Siskus here, he's gone through all of his law enforcement modules here. Sandy is also a local community resident here. So, we have been hiring eligible people in our community. George is with us from morning to night. Rambo, my main security officer that started with us, actually, we implemented this when we knew the state was going to require it, so we did it early, he'll be with us two days a week. So, we do have on-staff, he not only checks identifications, and he also checks online doctor recommendations, he also checks the state California doctors licensing board. Sandy is our receptionist, she greets you at the front, so her face is always there, too. So, the community knows that we have onsite security. We have people with us, not only for their protection, woman with her purse, my protection when I'm leaving, and have to do other things, and this is another state mandated requirement. So, if you can join the military at eighteen, carry a AR-15, you can at eighteen years' age get a medical recommendation, and the state decided that you have to be twenty-one to buy alcohol, as well as cannabis products. George's responsibility and Sandy's, before those people ever walk through other doors, we have to make sure that they're of legal age, and that they're competent of what we're doing. We have had some local people come in intoxicated from the bar across the street, and I've, we've had to ask them to leave. We haven't had anyone go outside and smoke marijuana and walk down Main Street, so it's kind of a flip of the coin. I have version in my hand, I'm not sure if this is the V eight and the, in the four thirty-nine, under eight-one, or eight-point-three-zero-one-four, state legalization of sale recreational cannabis in our ordinance, I don't know if this is the line you're talking about that you struck out, that says, in the event that the state of California legalizes the sale of recreational cannabis, any permit issues under the chapter shall automatically convert to one of such sales on the same terms and conditions specified herein. Is that the line that we omitted?
Yes.
Yes.
So, I was wondering if we omitted it, is it more difficult to put it back in?
More difficult, just a little process, we have to file.
And, and no offense, Ron, I really try to be professional with the business, when people that we have turned away, I say, there are three recreational dispensaries in Mount Shasta, here is a card for one, but there are three, you can look on Weed Maps and Leafly. I, I really honestly do do that, ask Sandy and my staff, they, they do say that, so we are not trying to be, we, we don't do that.
We wouldn't hold it against you, so that's...
So, I just want the people who's watching at home to understand that this is another example of how regulated we'd really, really are.
And I think it would speak a little bit to your point, Marilyn, in the fact, some, some of the issue is not from the retailer issue. You may have a little bit more of a valid point with the recreational use that allows anybody who wants to grow six plants at their residence. I would say that that becomes more of a problem than Elizabeth's. So, that, that, I mean...
Yeah, there's not an age requirement on that.
No, age, you can hop over people's fence, I mean, there's, I mean, so that, and I can't speak to that, because the state of California spoke to that, so. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Nancy Quigley, Woodridge. I've just been jotting some notes as I listen here, I'll probably think of more things after I sit down. Just to point out, some cities have chosen to ban sales completely, so just because you're bringing up this, oh, it's legal in the state, cities still have the right to make their own choices on these things, and it is still federally not legal, so there's just a whole can of worms there, you can go down. The, the permits that you issued, two permits, it was clear when they received those permits that they were getting medical-only permits. They knew this, they signed up for this, and that that's what they signed up for. And then after they got it, one of them decided that that's not really what they wanted, they changed their mind, apparently, according to what we've heard being said at all the meetings for the last couple of years, and now just recently, you're getting this barrage of, oh, they're coming off the freeway, and they're asking for weed, and, you know, I'm not going to make a profit because it's only medical? Well, they signed up for medical, so now they're trying to change it on you guys, and that's just not right. I'm sure I'll think of more after I sit down, but thank you for listening.
Okay, thanks, Nancy. Anymore from the audience? We'll close off audience participation. Comments, want to go up and down the line, on how we feel about this, or...
My position hasn't changed, and I stated where we are, and that's correct, they did sign up for that, but we knew that was coming, so that's something that was forethought, and I'm okay with us following what... and I'm okay with us following what we vote on. Again, I go back to dispensary piece, I voted for that, and the people said no, and I got comments on Facebook saying, "Stacy, I know you didn't agree with that, but thanks for following what your constituents said as a vote." I still think we need to follow that, regardless of where we agree, we're there to do what our constituents tell us, not in certain group, but the majority, because the majority rules, that's democracy in this state and in this country. So, everyone can bring up your little, not your little, your thoughts, which are important to you, and I agree with that, and I encourage that, but we have to be honest as a democratic entity to follow what the majority of our folks say, regardless if we agree with that. Now, it's our position to look at different spaces and make sure it's applicable as a whole, but we can't, but we can't meet 100%. And I'm just okay with that, even though I'm spoiled, I usually get my way, I'm okay with that.
That your mama used to tell you.
Yes, she did. And that, that's...
It's her fault.
Well, that's why I asked for a timeout, because we have different points that are important, and from you as a constituent, even our officials and elected appointed folks, those are important issues, and maybe we missed something, so I am an encourager of that, to be said and spoken of, but, you know, if you don't get it, you keep coming back and keep asking for it, I'm a little concerned about that area, and that's all.
Kim, any comment? For us, for the audience?
No, I would like to direct the staff to bring us back an ordinance, allowing recreational cannabis sales at currently permitted and operating medical cannabis dispensaries, but this time with a conditional use permit. I would like that added in.
Why conditional?
Because if we feel that it has, if it becomes a nuisance, or then we can pull that permit.
Okay.
Good point.
Completely, or pull their recreational?
Their recreational.
Pulling it affects the businesses. We gotta be thinking smart when we adopt these ordinances, that affect the businesses, because they've put a lot of money into it like anyone else would, we've gotta be applicable, think about that process. They put something into what we've said is okay, and have we looked at A through Z that makes them a effective business?
Yeah, but if they're not doing what we said, then we have the power to say, "Then you're not gonna operate in our town."
Yes, or we could amend the conditions, because this is a learning process, and I think as we've experienced through just the medicinal part, it's a very big learning process for us, so.
Mr. Mayor, my take on it is that we've created, we did the medicinal, we did the, we have restrictions or qualifications that we have to have two other modalities of treatment. I think that, I think that we're, I think we need to go ahead and move forward, but to do it in a responsible way. And we are, I think we're out on the edge, you know, we are, we're stepping out here, but we're saying, you know, we're, basically, what I'm saying is, I don't think the sky's gonna fall. I think the more we regulate this cannabis, the better our communities are gonna be, because it's here, it's been here, it's gonna be here. And the monetary value on it does mean something that people respect. If you pay money for something, you tend to be a little more responsible with it than the, like Mr. Mayor said, that, you know, the people, the guy that's growing six plants in his backyard or in his bedroom or wherever he's doing it, we have no idea what that is, and that is a whole different situation than being able to regulate it. And I think that if you, if we follow, I'm not saying we should set somebody out and take pictures of people when they go in, but you'll find that people that are buying from a dispensary, they have money, you know, they do, they can afford it, they have lives that do allow them to purchase this cannabis and not have to go out on the black market to undercut. That's my take.
No, I have nothing.
She's worn out.
I just, I wrote it down right here, I'm good, I just put my thoughts on paper, I'm all right.
So we need...
Just to regulate staff.
I think I've already stated my position, I don't know if I need to repeat. To me, I think the current retailer can probably make it, I don't have any question on that. But I do, the issue that we did not intend to kind of morph to retail, I don't think anybody's kidding anybody here if we say we weren't looking at that intention, but because that's where it's moving, that's where it's going.
It's moved to...
We just wanted to make sure that our citizens felt a little comfortable with having a cannabis dispensary in our neighborhoods. I don't know if we were successful, we spent a lot of time debating who is in line and whatever, but, and I think if we had had a few more months, everybody would realize a little bit, the sky didn't fall, as Bob would say. Anyway, I...
Can I ask, Chief? You're the only chief left, the other one left. Have you had any calls to Elizabeth's store at all?
Besides her alarm?
But then, but then Crystal Geysers goes off once a month, too.
Yeah, but you know it works.
No, no issues?
Or may I add, any crime-related or suggested activity because of that store being open?
Have you seen anything in the community at all that would infer that more of anything is happening?
So that speaks to the crime element that, I remember when Sergeant Justin, a while ago, mentioned that.
He said...
Are you telling us we gotta go home, because I've seen that light before?
You know what that means, right? Dinner's getting cold.
I don't eat dinner any other way.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to agree with Commissioner, Councilmember Kim Green, to direct staff to, for the regulations to be put in place, supporting the recreational piece.
With the conditional use?
Yes.
Permit. Okay. That's what she guessed.
Need any more direction? Ron's shaking, he said another ordinance.
No, but I'm gonna ask you to take the conditional use out. Planning Commission, looking at conditional use, sets the rules and regulations under which a particular use of property can occur. You've already set the rules and regulations under which the dispensary can operate, so you haven't left anything for the Planning Commission to add. Therefore, you're asking them to give approval to your actions without having the opportunity for them to have participated in the creation of the original ordinance. So I understand your position, but if you issue a license, you do have the right to revoke a license, but you have to follow due process and you have to have justifiable reason. So I don't think adding the conditional use does anything for you.
Makes a difference, because we already have that in place.
I think you do.
Okay.
I'd like to add to that, the importance of the town hall meeting, that's the point, that would do some education to the community and have everyone be more abreast of the information that's out there and activities that we're doing as a city. If that can be targeted with that, I'd like, because you guys just do things well, so however that can be, I would encourage that, a regular town hall meeting, whoever's staff needs to be represented, from both sides, and people, us, police activities, I think that's an important piece, because when I'm hearing out in the public, what the questions people have, there's still questions on both sides, as Ms. Blankenship has mentioned, and others.
I'm gonna ask Elizabeth to do that, every time I say something nice about her, then she criticizes me up here at the podium, so I'm not gonna say anything more.
Hell with her, huh? So...
That's a possibility, I'm gonna put more work, more staff work, but I think it's necessary.
I think we could have a town hall meeting for, actually to understand the rules and regulations that a dispensary goes through.
I have a PowerPoint already that I've been putting together.
I mean, yeah, I gave several of them, I may add.
And possibly, Ray, because you talk way too damn fast...
Not happy.
So that you could maybe do a PowerPoint to the Appalachian, so people in here, I mean, just knowledge helps a little bit. My intention as being on the city council is not to make people afraid of anything, it's actually to make people comfortable, so.
Do you need a second on Kim's motion?
Yeah, can I get a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We could set up a special council meeting, how long do you think, will it be ready by tomorrow? Or could we, as one suggestion, add back that phrase, that we...
Change a couple of words, but it could go right back to...
But we still go through the process of...
We still have to change the ordinance as a revision. Okay, anyway. Today is the 8th, House Calendar looking for councilors, 22nd, 29th, 5th, what are we looking?
The 5th, I'm okay with that, so everything's...
Out of town on the 5th, but...
As long as I have notice.
You don't need me.
As long as I have notice, well, we'd like to have you here, you're part of the subcommittee.
Yeah. 29th?
Is that Memorial Day weekend?
Out of town. I can do the 26th, 27th, the 2nd, or the 3rd.
I can't do 27, 26.
Thursday's...
How's Sue looking? Wide open calendar.
Yeah, I don't do anything.
How about the 5th?
Doesn't have to go to work.
You're not going on a trip?
Nope.
15th of March?
March 26th, you'll be around, you said?
That's a workday for me, unless you can do it and I can be here...
What time do you go to work?
I get off, we're going hours, daylight saving times, an hour extra, so it'll be 7 o'clock now for me.
What time do you go in?
I will be available after 7:00.
Could do it at 7:00.
Like if we had a morning meeting?
I will be available after 7:00.
You might not go as long.
How about the 22nd, is that a workday?
Stay safe.
The hours are different, just do it like I said.
I'll be on the 22nd.
I'm in Sacramento on the 27th.
Does anybody stay home anymore?
I can do the 19th.
You're good on Mondays, that doesn't work for anybody else, how about you?
I'm okay.
Unless you have early mornings.
I can do the 23rd.
Can your businesses that you support be effective in the morning?
On Friday?
No, 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 I can't do the 23rd. I have one thing all month, it's on the 23rd.
We do a morning time, any of those dates?
I think the problem with mourning is staff, or not?
You know, the 22nd is when I leave for China, and I don't get back till the 30th, so you're not gonna have me.
Go listen to that lunatic.
But it's not a problem for the rest of the staff to show up, as long as it's...
You don't have to have me.
After 8:00.
I'm gonna be on the road, like, through the end of May.
Let's set it for the 29th, wherever you will be. You're okay with the 29th?
I'll be in Humboldt.
Depending on the time, I'll be late, but, is it at 5:30 or 6:00?
Well, we only have, it's a special agenda, it'll be a single item issue, maybe with the Appalachian, it might be two.
I can plan, I believe I can plan. I'll ask to be...
We can do it later, it's...
I don't like later, because we go too long, our later meetings go too long, like this.
5th? Doesn't matter for you?
Either, as long as I know I can plan, I can get coverage.
Shoot for the 29th, then.
Kim's not gonna be here, correct?
She's not gonna be here 29th, 5th, or whatever.
This is to address what?
If we do it the 29th, Ron will have his presence here, correct?
No.
No?
No, doesn't get back till 30th.
He's leaving 22nd.
How about the 15th?
Leaving the 22nd.
The 15th.
Sue's got a record.
Let's go back to the 5th, everybody will be here on the 5th, then. You have the ordinance, so... You gotta have, is that five days?
Okay.
Might be a week.
Where are you gonna be?
We do, you know, we have to, we're gonna introduce on the 5th, pass on the 12th, be live on May 12th, approximately. Otherwise, we're going into June or July, is that correct? As the wheels of government turn.
You may date when the ordinance will be effective.
We can't go any earlier than that at all.
Elizabeth would have to tell you, but I think that the possibility exists that she could apply after the adoption on second reading, even though the ordinance won't be effective for 30 days.
You just can't issue for 30 days.
Yeah.
Are we still, just as another point, are we settled with all other candidates?
No.
All other candidates, all other complaints regarding our issuance of permits?
In other words, did Elevate...
Yeah, there's been no activity on that since the last meeting, I offered Elevate a $10,000 full refund, and I have not heard from them, so I presume there's really nothing more to say on that.
Okay. Okay, so, all right, so 5th it is?
5:30?
Go 6, 6, it shouldn't be too many when issued, 6:00?
I'm okay with 5:30, it's April 5th, I'm okay with the 5:30.
Okay, 5:30, April 5th. What's that?
Nobody else can do Mondays, except me.
I can do the morning.
I can do Mondays. You know, we can't do without her, we can't do with her.
Yeah, May 1st is when we, our temporary licenses will either be expanded, or we'll have to file for permanent.
She's getting it done prior to that.
Is there a cost to that?
Oh, yes.
And it costs what, may I ask?
15.
$1,500?
No.
$1,000.
$1,000, oh wow.
How much?
$15,000.
That's just for weed, that's not including the fee for availability.
There's only one making money in the state of California.
Mr. Mayor, what we're dealing with, we can't do it until the May meeting, correct? Or can we get...
We'll have second reading at the April meeting, if you have the first reading on the 5th.
But that's 30 days from the 12th?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're talking May 12th, that's gonna put you, is that how, am I understanding that? I think Ron just said something about you...
There's no other way to do it, because it's March.
Yeah, if you did it in March and got it into April, because March, whatever, say 19th to the 19th of April would be the second reading, during that second reading time before May 1st, I can submit the application back into the state.
Is the 15th or 19th not work?
I don't understand why that would, why that would make a difference.
It'll be the 12th.
Because I think Martin will tell you, once they receive that, they actually do call the city and counter with the chief of police or the manager that you have passed this, saying recreational's okay, yes, we have, then they'll move forward with the permitting.
So that would be before your May deadline, May 1st deadline?
Yes.
On the 12th, after the 12th, you're, okay.
We just can't issue the permit until May, after May 12.
And we need to give notice to the other group, whatever, what was their name?
I said open, I said permitted and operating.
Open, permitted, and operating.
But that's up to you guys, when you meet on the 5th.
You can't leave that on us.
Nor can we leave it on the businesses to pay extra just because of our timing.
Yeah, I understand that, too.
That's where I'm speaking from.
Operating when now, within, what was the timeframe you're looking for?
When the permit, when it...
Because the census is gonna be, they may be, by the time we do this, we might be out of compliance, we can't go out of here, so I guess we'll, where's my agenda? Let's go to, move on to the consent agenda, anybody wanna pull anything off the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just not confused on our dates right there, what we're doing, can I ask clarification on that?
April 5th, we're gonna introduce the recreation, adult-use cannabis ordinance, and on May 12th, we will probably adopt if everything, I mean, excuse me, April 12th, we will adopt if everything goes as planned.
Okay. So that's a regular meeting?
And then it will be approved for May.
Which doesn't put a hamper on our current businesses that are in...
Which doesn't put a hamper on our current businesses that are in place.
No.
Okay, that, that was my focus.
We can't hurry it any more than we are just to...
It does not allow me to do any recreational, just because we had this discussion.
No.
No.
Well, we know that, okay. All right, let's move on to consent agenda. Anybody wanna pull anything off the consent agenda? Seen, anybody wanna approve it? Make a, make a vote to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Onto staff reports. I think we wore you guys out, I'm sorry.
Dinner's getting cold, that's my...
It's done cold already, yeah.
Get used to it.
I just have a tuna sandwich, it's good.
Springtime, things are starting to happen, starting to roll. They're kicking rocks over out there. Ron has had a lot of contact with different ones.
What does that mean? I'm sorry. Kicking and rocking location, what area?
I'm not gonna say anything.
Let Ron talk about it, 'cause there's some things we can't say.
I've talked to a, a couple.
I would like to say that T O T is up. Sales tax must be up.
Sales tax is up a little bit, yes, we, we, uh, yeah, that report was...
Yeah, it was in here.
It was in there, which is good.
Yeah, overall, yeah.
Martin?
Couple of things, uh, in your boxes, I submitted the annual report for the police department.
Cover to cover.
Cut, yeah, we, you know what, I, I put the picture on my wall.
Martin, I read it.
Yeah, it was good. I read it too. I wanna commend.
Actually, Martin, I'm glad Martin puts a report together, actually, 'cause it's nice to know the officers who we, we never get a chance to meet them very often.
Well, yeah, I, the state controllers' report is in and recorded down there. That was a lot of fun.
Uh, what else you got?
Uh, seniors shoveling, snow shoveling took place.
Yeah.
I dream of seeing that stuff. So that's, uh, gone on the last couple of weeks. Uh, the twenty-third is cops versus kids basketball game. I'd like to invite all of you to come to that, uh, six o'clock.
Elementary or high school?
Twenty bucks.
Okay, so there's, there should be a new rule this year that when you're playing basketball, you cannot wear a baseball hat. It's just, it, no, it wasn't you, but it was one of your staff and they looked ridiculous.
Are, are they lowering the baskets for you guys or what?
You don't wear a baseball hat while you're playing basketball.
Who, who, who won last year?
Elementary school.
The kids.
And girls both won.
It was a great game. I hope we can attend it. People look at us.
It was fun.
Anyway, uh, last thing, uh, we're working with COS. They asked us, uh, to, uh, look into having a satellite office, uh, on their campus and we're proceeding with that at this point. A lot of officer can stop in, write a report, make contact, do interviews on campus, those kind of things, so...
Little presence on campus, that's good. I like that.
May I ask a question? I'm sorry. In, in accordance with what we've done with elementary and high school, is there a need for the college to be looked at from a safety perspective?
We are doing the same thing, but then we haven't had any formal training up to this point, but we're...
That's good, no, thank you.
Sandy?
Um, I leave for Riverside on March twelfth. I'll be back on the seventeenth, so...
A month?
Training.
Oh.
For training, yeah. So I'm glad the special meeting's on the nineteenth.
She came back.
So, yes, so I'll be, uh, my first week-long class in Riverside, um, starting Monday, and I'll return on the seventeenth.
Job looking good?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Ron?
I wanted to tell you about the Chinese trip. Chinese government sends a number of students over to the U.S. to go to college, um, on an annual basis. They tend to try to pick the more elite schools like Stanford and Michigan. Uh, they have found a problem, and that is the cultural differences are such that the students usually do not do well in their first year. And it's held against them in regard to the honors that they might earn as they complete their degrees. And it's held against them as they seek a master's or doctor's degree elsewhere. So they're trying something new, and that is they're trying to send high school seniors over to go to school for a year at the local high school. And the grades that they earn may be affected by the cultural change, but it's really not held against them much. The proposal is to bring twenty-five students next year to attend Dunsmere High because of Dunsmere's lack of students. They will generate something in the neighborhood of about three hundred thousand dollars in fees from the Chinese government uh, for the twenty-five students.
All twenty-five are gonna go to Dunsmere?
All twenty-five right now. I'm gonna try to steal as many as I can for weed, believe me.
Oh!
And when I'm done, I may get all twenty-five for weed. But the, the, um... The idea was that twenty-five would go to Dunsmere. That's the way they started out. And then they would go their first year at COS. And then they had transfer to the more elite schools. And the two years gives them the opportunity to get the cultural, um, differences in control so that they can do well academically. Um, so I'm going primarily for the purpose of supporting COS. And we're going to Gung Sha, which is on the Pearl River, just to the north of Hong Kong. Um, the first province and the first major town, um, inside mainland China from Hong Kong. Their, their student body is twenty-seven hundred students in their high school. If we can get this program going, it would be twenty-five each and every year. It's good for our, our community because, to some extent, COS is a glorified high school in that when you go there, you're really not getting, um, others from other cultures. I mean, it may be, may be a student from Medford, but y- y- y'all kinda grew up the same way, okay? And having the ability to meet and to learn about other cultures, I think, has a positive effect. And I think that our students will gain a great deal from having these students within our community. Right now, the plan is for all twenty-five to live in weed. But they're going to be looking for, uh, families that are, you know, willing to take a foreign exchange student for the first year. And we may not have twenty-five that are willing to do that. Also, the principal at, at, uh, Dunsmere is, based on emails that have been going back and forth this week, this week, he's not fully on board, which gives me the opportunity to get Mattson involved, okay? So I'm gonna try to get, I'm gonna try to get some of these students to come here as well as Dunsmere, but ultimately, uh, spend a year at COS. Not all of the fees for the trip are being covered for me, but it's an international educational group out of Vancouver that has been doing this for years in Canada and is now expanding to the West Coast, the United States. So we're working with people who really know what they're doing, and they're gonna cover most of the cost. What they don't cover, I'm covering personally. There will not be a single dollar spent of the City of Weed's money for this, uh, for this trip. But, um, I wanted you to be aware that it was happening.
I got more questions.
Okay.
So all twenty-five kids are gonna live in Dunsmere, or they were going to live, bring them everywhere in South County? Where, where were twenty-five kids gonna live?
You see, they, a year ago, they brought the Chinese group here to see our facilities. And they showed them Dunsmere High, but they didn't show them Weed High, 'cause I, we weren't involved at that point. They showed them COS and Dunsmere. So the proposal that they looked at and that they approved was twenty-five students residing in Weed, attending Dunsmere High.
Oh!
And attending COS, okay? Um, and that's the appros- a proposal that they approved, but there have to be MOUs drafted between the schools.
And the city.
In order to finalize the deal. Um, and the, and the, they're trying to finalize the deal for the students to start August two thousand and nineteen. So, um, to the extent that we're now involved, there's an advantage to having some of the students in Weed High School as well. And to the extent that I can accomplish that, I'm gonna try. Now, obviously, they wanted them housed in Weed because they wanted them to have a stable home for two years. And they were going to COS the second year, so that's why they were thinking housing Weed. But I don't know if, if we're going to be using, um, families that are willing to take, um, um, an international exchange student into their home, we might not have twenty-five in Weed. So the, the footprint of where those twenty-five are gonna live is probably going to expand. You know, I've got a spare bedroom. I've got a fourteen-year-old who would really, um, is really a little too young. Would be nice if I had a junior or a senior because it'd be closer to age. But the cultural advantages, I'll offer my home, um, um, for a foreign exchange student. I'm sure that there are others within the community that will do so as well.
This is really not new in our community. This is something that happened, I mean, when I was in middle school, there were huge groups that came. It's just been a long time.
And, and Rotary has done this. Rotary tends to do, you know, one student a year, um, one way or the other. Um, sometimes they send our students elsewhere. Sometimes a student comes here. These are just good things to happen, and quite honestly, with the Chinese government paying, the, the actual costs associated will actually help some of our schools that might have a little bit of light enrollment. So it, it's, it's really a good program, and, um, I, I hope it's successful, if, and, and so we're, uh, we're gonna meet the mayor of Guizhong. Hopefully, I can actually pronounce the name of the city when I meet him. Um, but he probably won't know the difference because I'm not saying it in Chinese. I can now show you how, um, how my name is written in Chinese. But I cannot duplicate it. Anyway, that's completing my report.
So just so that you know, I've had conversations with some of the councilors in, uh, Dunsmere. And they're not drinking any Kool-Aid. So, and I'm, I'm hoping that the party involved here is just so undependable. He's, he is, um, never follows through. So, so I'm, I'm wishing us well on this journey, I suppose, but I'm not, you know, Mr. Juarez, 'cause this involves Mr. Juarez, everybody knows, is not...
Mark is a, is a dreamer, and he hopes that he can modify his properties so that they could become a dormitory. But I hope you noticed that Terry Chen's proposal was not to put the students in a dormitory, it was to put the students into individual homes.
And if they can converse directly with you, I would just, my heart would be really into it. But if they got, we gotta deal with, with, uh, Mark. I, I am just so, so skeptical. I, I was actually thinking about that I might wanna go, but I, I just, uh...
To China?
Yeah, he invited a number of people to China.
Yeah, and, and Mark has a reputation that makes his proposals suspect.
Did you see my calendar?
And, and when he first came to me, I thought, nah, do this. And then I had the opportunity to talk to the people in Vancouver, and they really know what they're doing, okay? So, I'm...
You're making me feel a little bit warmer and fuzzier, because I'm going, oh, my goodness gracious.
And I would think that by their second year, they would wanna be in the dorms and in the culture of the college. But in the high school year, no, you're not gonna leave them alone to fend for themselves in another country where they don't know the language or the culture or...
Anyway, great, that was good. Anymore?
Yep.
Okay, Bob?
I can't match that.
You don't wanna go to Lung Pow or whatever it is? I don't know. We'll talk.
Make a motion to adjourn to closed session?
I'll make a motion, go ahead.
I'm not gonna be here at the April meeting, so...
Which April? Both Aprils?
Both April meetings, yes.
Suspend your check.
Yeah. I'll have you know, after our first ever meeting that Sandy came to, she said, you guys don't make enough money. And that was only her first one.
We just love the torture.
Are we adjourning to...
I make a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Closed session. I made that motion already.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.